Councilmember Kusamoto.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy.
Here.
Mayor Gramahia.
Here.
Sunburst Youth Academy Student Council, Class 14. Baska Mullen.
Here.
Justin Ramos.
Here.
Jacob Gonzalez.
Present.
David Brown.
Here.
Jessica Cisneros.
Here.
Sapphire DeMello.
Here.
Christian Felix.
Here.
Gerardo Gonzalez.
Here.
Omar Hernandez.
Here.
Anna Yeli Mendez.
Here.
Michael Mendoza.
Here.
David Poulsen.
Here.
Stacy Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Penelope Rios.
Honored.
Not president.
And then, I apologize, Cadet Stewart?
Here.
All right, we're going to move on to the pledge allegiance that will be given by Sunburst Council President Cadet Mellon, and then the invocation will be given by Student Council Cadet First Sergeant Brown. Would you please stand or remain standing through the invocation? Why don't we have you come forward, whoever's going to...
Do we actually have to...
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourself, then?
I'm Cadet First Sergeant Brown from the Sunburst Youth Academy. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? My hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for remaining standing, and we'd have the cadet please come forward that's going to do the invocation. Give him his name.
Hello, ladies and gen... Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Cadet Mellon. I just... Please bow your heads in the honor of God's word or prayer. Dear Lord, I thank you for gathering us here all today, Lord. I just ask of you your presence and your peace is in this room, Lord, and that you guide this council and that everything goes the way that you want it to be, Lord. And with that said, amen, Lord.
Amen. Good job. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to some presentations, so if the council will step down to the front, please.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, may I give a report while they're doing... While they're stepping down?
Absolutely.
Close session. Council did meet in closed session. You can go ahead. Step down. Council met in closed session and discussed two of the items that I mentioned prior to going into the closed session. The first of those was the evaluation of city attorney. No formal votes were taken or requested. And the second was the litigation matter, Item E, and the council voted to refrain from participating in that action. That concludes my report.
Okay, why don't we go ahead and have Joel Armstrong please come to the front and give an update on the academy? Don't mean to catch you off guard, but it's all Dean's fault.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I really appreciate it. I'm Joel Armstrong, the Director for the Sunburst Youth Academy, and this is my Commandant, First Sergeant Michael Scott. And I also... Special thanks to Councilmember Gross because he is pretty much the one that allows us to come forward. Before you, the student council for the Sunburst Youth Academy, we are an organization that caters to at-risk teens and high school dropouts between ages of 16 and 18 years old. We are a 22-month, 22-week residential phase program at the Joint Forces Training Base. So these young ladies and gentlemen are going to graduate here very soon, on the 12th of December, at Cottonwood Church, and we all would like to invite you to come on out and join us. Madam Mayor, we know that your time is short, and you've been a very good friend to the academy and a very good leader, and I want to thank you with a small token of a Sunburst Youth Academy coin.
It's not as delightful as the president's, but it will...
It's a second choice. And then, First Sergeant.
Thank you for your service. This is a Sunburst Youth Academy paperweight. It's crystal, very nice. Thank you. Congratulations.
I'm so touched, you guys. I had a conversation with Joel. These coins are something that many of us on the council like to collect, and I had said, "Hey, what's the deal? How come I'm the girl, so I don't get one? Is that it?" So, you know, this academy is one of the best things that I think that we're a part of. I mean, changing the lives of these kids and giving them direction, not us, the council, but being a part of it through a partnership with you. It's just something we're very proud of. So thank you so much. I'm very touched. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're going to go ahead and bring up our three new commissioners. If we could have Stephen Hammond, Emil George, and Josh Wilson come to the front? Why don't you each take... Why don't you come forward, Stephen? Josh, right here. We, as a council, have the opportunity to have commissioners who do quite a bit of the work for us in different areas, and these gentlemen are our newest commissioners. We haven't had the opportunity to bring them before the council like this and introduce them to the community, but Dean Gross had seen it at a different council and thought that this would be good for us. So we'd like to introduce to you first Stephen Hammond for the Cable Commission. Please give him a hand. And then we've got Josh Wilson, and he's going to be on the Parks, Recs, and Cultural Art Commission, which is a mouthful.
Yes.
And then finally, we have Emil George with us. And Emil, what commission are you with? That's what I thought. Parks, Rec, and Cultural Arts. I wanted to give them each just a real quick second to say something if you'd like to. Josh, would you like to say something?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm honored and thankful for the council for recommending me and for approving me for this commission. I'm very much looking forward to serving the residents of the city, and I'm open any considerations for anyone at the parks. Please come and contact me. I'm happy to do so. And I say thank you for my family in attendance over there. There's a big reason why I moved to the city, and I'm looking forward to doing everything to. So thank you much.
Josh is very humble. He's been very involved in the city through the chamber, the young professionals, through Southland Credit, who is a huge sponsor for many of our events, so we're very pleased to have Josh onboard. Thanks so much. Emil?
I'll echo a lot of what you heard from Josh, but I've been privileged to live in this community my entire life, so I've gotten much more out of the community than I've given back, so this is, I suppose, my stepping stone to giving back for a few years, as many years as I can anyways. But thank you all for the opportunity, and just to let you know, we had our first meeting. It's a great group of guys and ladies on the commission, and they've already worked their tail off to help this community, and we're going to continue that tradition. Thank you.
Thank you all for making me a member of the commission. I'm going to do my best to make LATV serve the community, and to that end, I hope everyone who's listening to my voice will start coming to the commission meetings, let your views be known about what you want LATV to be.
Thank you very much. Stephen's been very involved for a very long time. He's come to a lot of our council meetings and had input, so it's nice to finally have you on the commission, Stephen. Welcome. All right. Oh, Emil, don't forget your name.
No.
My wife Julie, my boy's Adam, Michael, and Nathan. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, thank you so much. Look forward to what you have to come forward.
Thank you, Dean.
We're going to move on to Item B. Could I have Pauline Foster please come forward? Hi, Pauline, come on over. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Pauline is one of our great students and one of our great community kids. I'm going to have to put my glasses on to read this because I'm getting old. We're giving her a commendation for her community service. Pauline is a successful student at Los Alamos High School and has been a proud member of the honor roll and advanced band for the last four years, which is very hard to do. You don't get advanced band your first year generally. She's a member of the No Bullying Campaign 2014 for the Los Alamos High School District and also is involved in several service clubs at Los Alamos High School, including the American Cancer Society, American Red Cross, and Connecting Generations. She has volunteered with children as a student teacher at... You're going to have to help me with that. Camer Arts Cultural Center and a Cambodian dance instructor. Pauline is an active volunteer with the Ronald McDonald House, a Girl Scouts of America, and is part of the Teen Advisory Board for the Mary Wilson Library. Therefore, I, Jerry Gramahia, Mayor of the City of Los Alamos, on behalf of the city council, do hereby commend Pauline Foster for her community service and academic excellence.
For the last year, I've been part of the Miss Teens Seal Beach Court 2014. It's been a lot of fun. I've got so much experience from there. I've been to many city council meetings, mostly in Seal Beach, but now I'm starting to do more community work for Los Alamos, and it's been very fun. So I will be running in the pageant again this year, March 1st, so I hope I do well. Thank you.
And Pauline's mother is here. I met Pauline's father, it's kind of a funny story, at the laundromat. I had some big things that I had to do, and I ran into her dad, and it was actually her 16th birthday, and he was really a proud father, and he was talking a great deal about you, and I thought, "That's a perfect opportunity for us to recognize you." So thank you for coming today. And if we could, could we get her Wendy a pen to go along with her Seal Beach pen? Okay, great. And thank you to your mom for coming. All right. Thanks, Pauline. All your dad, okay. All right, and we're going to invite Stephen Mendoza up. He's our Community Development Director, and Stephen was nice enough to reach out to some of the smaller businesses, and we're going to ask him to give these awards.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Today, I want to introduce Ms. Yasmin Altuner. I just saw her, so if she could step up. Yasmin, for all of you not aware, this is the face of small business. This is somebody who struggles every day to provide a product and to employ people and to provide a service and a product you can buy here in Los Alamos. On November 29th, we are celebrating Small Business Saturday. It's a day that everyone gets together. It's after the Friday, and it's before Cyber Monday, so what they want you to do is shop local, shop often, and shop small. And with that, I'm going to give... Tell you a little bit about Antica Olive Oil. They were founded in 2011 on April 26th and provide high-end premium extra virgin olive oils. And they do tastings as well here in Los Alamos. They're right on Los Alamos Boulevard. And I'm not sure if you know that small businesses in the country currently employ over 28 million people. 28 million people. Small businesses employ half of the employees in the private sector, and their advocacy groups and private and public organizations across the country have endorsed Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. And with that, right before we declare Small Business Saturday on November 29th, I'm going to turn the mic over to Yasmin to tell you a little about her business because this is her minute to shine.
Okay, well, hello, everybody. I am Jasmine Altuner, and yes, owner of Antica Olive Oils, and it stands for antique because, as you know, olive oil and balsamic vinegar have been a part of the Mediterranean diet forever. So it makes you healthy and gives you those antioxidants, and the thing about our products is that we promote eating healthy. It's not about bread dipping, and we are very, very busy at the store. A lot of people in this area have been very welcoming to us. We're also very charitable as well to the community. We have donated a lot of dollars back to the high schools, the middle schools, and the elementary schools. So not only are we just a small business owner, and we do want you to shop local, but by shopping local, also you're also supporting the schools around you because then I'm able to give back to them. Okay, so what goes around, comes around, right? Okay, and who knows where Spin Pizza is? Okay, right next to Spin Pizza is a cute little mustardy-looking Tuscany building, and there's an Enchanted Florist next door. We're right in that little center, 11110, Los Alamos Boulevard Suite 103, and it's a cute little hidden treasure where there's a lot of cool stores. And just so you know, I was chosen to be in the Rossmore Christmas Home Tours. I'm number seven, so I'm one of the stops. Okay? Thank you.
And with that, the mayor would like to... Mayor Jerry Gramahia and with the concurrence of the city council hereby proclaims November 29th as Small Business Saturday and presents this proclamation to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm so glad you're... Okay, Dean, here's your little... It's easier to read on the white.
You're right.
Yeah, it was really hard.
Thank you. Oh, she does. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
I'm about to tell you a story about a kind of a quasi-small business. Tom Barkley is important to the city for so much. I can't begin to tell you what a great representative of Genal Lumber and what a great representative of business and commerce this man is. Mr. Tom Barkley joined Genal Lumber in October of 1980. At the time, he didn't know how much the company... He didn't know much about the company when he did, and he would not have to work retail shifts until 9:00 PM any longer. That's all he hoped, is that he would have limited hours. Tom Barkley started out in the yard, helping customers with material, and served as a customer service manager. Tom's first general manager role came in 1991, when the opening of the yard in the Garden Grove store. In 1998, he moved to Los Alamos when Genal was purchased... When Genal purchased the assets, Bar Lumber. You may all remember that Genal used to be Bar Lumber. Mr. Tom Barkley has held that position since May 1998, and the most coveted general manager position within the nine branches of Genal today. Easy to say it's a large business, but they act small. They act small, and they act local, and that's why we appreciate them so much. I'm going to have Tom come up and join us now that I've said a little bit of good about Tom. I'm going to say a few more things about Tom because this is really where he excels. Tom's involvement in the community is a testament to many people of the community, from dignitaries, city staff, community volunteers, and many nonprofits and our neighbors. I can't tell you how many times this man has approached for assistance or help, but I'll bet you the times he says yes is more than the times he's been approached. I don't think this man knows how to say no, and he has taught his staff to be the giver that he is. He really is an incredible representation of what business is in a small town and represent the city of Los Alamos well. Tom will be moving forward to represent their new store in Torrance soon, and so we are sending him away. We are... He's going to leave us in good hands, but we wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank him, and so therefore Jerry Gramahia, Mayor of the City of Los Alamos, with the concurrence of all the city council, and I thank the entire community, want to thank you for your years of dedicated service to the community and wish you well as you go to the city of Torrance. Their gain is truly our loss, and we wanted to thank you very much. And if I can add, Tom is also going to be honored as...
Americana Man of the Year.
The... Los Alamos, Rossmore.
Awesome.
Yeah. He was selected by the Americana Cypress College in February, so he'll be... He is our representation in the Man of the Year. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I'm very, very honored. I appreciate it. I'm very fortunate to have worked 16 years here in Los Alamos. I thank the leadership, city leadership, city staff, all the many nonprofits, the folks who used our facility over the years for meetings and things. They all just have kind of a certain way of welcoming you to the community and getting you involved, and for that, I'm very thankful. Also like to thank the culture at Genal Lumber Company. Peter Genal is in the audience tonight. Also is that culture that encourages us to get involved. I'd also like to introduce just quickly Chad Kidder, who's going to be the guy carrying the baton for the next 16 years. Thank you very much. It's really been a great ride. This is a beautiful city. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks a lot.
If you like.
You know what? It's really fun to be part of this community. We came here in 98, and I've never come to a community that's been so welcoming to us, to our business, and it's been a delight.
We also have one more presentation for Senator Lou Correa. He's not going to be here until a little bit later, so we're going to go ahead and move on with the agenda, and when he arrives, we'll go ahead and take a little break and make sure we give him that recognition. All right. Thank you to all those recipients who came tonight. We really appreciate you being here. We'll move on to Item 8, which is oral communications. At this time, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. I have one card already for Debbie Feldman. You went right to the top of the list. Debbie, will you just go ahead and give your name for the record?
Sure. Debbie Feldman. I'm a resident of Los Alamos for the 20-plus years. I love this city, and I love Genal Lumber. We're there a lot. First, I have two different things, and I think I can get it all in in five minutes. So first, I want to talk about the city of Cypress and their development of land. And being a real estate agent for the past 20 years, we know a little bit about some of the things of what they're saying versus the truth of what they're saying. So again, I ask and I thank the council for protecting us, supporting us, standing by us, and representing us and this great city that we live in to... What I... I'm just going to put it out there and just saying, the city of Cypress is bullying us again. When they come to us with the idea of senior housing, which they have passed to their great citizens as a lure to, "We're going to do this," and then actually have a whole different agenda and swap out what it is that they're saying they're doing, it's like a sheep in wolf's clothing. The idea of senior housing, we're all going to be seniors. I'm heading there. I may be one already. It's important that we have a place to live, a place to go, but when they talk about developing property in a gated community, which is very nice, but when the average home... For a lot of seniors that have been in their homes for quite a while, let's say they're selling them for $700,000, and that's an average. It could be a little less, a little more in Cypress, but why would anybody pay $850 for a home? And they're saying their properties are going for $500 to $850. What senior is going to sell their home for less, lose their Prop 60 advantage, so their taxes are now going to be more and incur more cost? None of it makes any sense to me. They talk about having a mixed restricted housing, age-restricted housing, but yet they don't tell you what that age is. And it's great if they're going to build families for young people. Go for it. I think it's great, but be honest of what they're doing. Be honest of what you're trying to get us to believe. What happened to the parks that we were promised in the get-go? They used the senior housing before. It's the least amount of their agenda. It's probably on the lowest part of their agenda, yet they're making it the top of using their sales point. We're not stupid. You're not stupid. The citizens of Cypress aren't stupid, yet their council continues to bully everybody into believing that what they're doing is a good thing. Be honest of what they're doing. Be honest of what your intentions are. Be honest of what you really plan to do. They're not being honest. They're saying that they're planning to develop... In the first part of this letter that we've all received, they're talking about developing 560 dwellings, yet later in the letter, it now goes down to seven... I'm sorry, 375 of senior housing. What happened to the 185 homes? What are those going to be? You know, and then they're talking about developing their 50,000 square feet of retail. I'm sure there's going to be businesses that we'll love to go to and support, but what about the traffic on Cotella that's already congested? Then they're going to want a signal at Enterprise. As a citizen of Los Alamos, and I'm sure there's a lot of citizens here in this room, out in TV land, that are watching this, we don't want that. And there's got to be something that I'm hoping that the city council can do through traffic, through whatever you need to do. Let them figure out a way to come in on Cerritos. Let them figure out a way to use the church, maybe use some of their property to go through. I'm sure the church would be more than willing to help out, and that would be a nice community thing for them to do. As we were originally told when the church was being built...
You can go ahead and finish.
Okay. When the church was being built, we were told there was two lanes that were going to be used for Lexington. There's only one. There weren't supposed to be stop signs. There's a bunch on there. So we've given in and given in and given in enough. We know the land's going to be built. We just want to make sure that all of you protect all of us and fight against what they are proposing, that they're telling us, versus what they really have planned. No signal on Cotella and Enterprise. Let them come in through Cerritos and develop what they're going to do, but protect us on Cotella. We're already congested. We can't have any more cars and other things. So I thank you for that.
Sure.
So my second thing, and should I go back and come back, or what do you want?
No. Are you going to be able... We do have the item. I see here it says for the fireworks. You can actually speak at the time of the item?
Sure.
All right. Thank you so much.
I'd be happy to do so. Thank you again for listening and really protecting our city and our citizens. We really think that's great. And on one personal note, I'm so glad to see you as mayor. I think that your time was long overdue, and I would just want to say, congratulations. You've done a good job.
Thank you for your kind words. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Will you state your name for the record, even though we introduced you about five minutes ago?
Stephen Hammond, Greenbrook. Inasmuch as the city manager has assured the LATV commission that expenditures from the LATV savings account shall be used only for equipment supplies, I would like someone to explain what the current warrants expenditure that's to be approved tonight is for. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, when we get to the warrants, I know there's a council member who's going to pull them. If we could have some clarification on that for Mr. Hammond, that would be great. Thank you, Mr. Hammond. Anyone else wishing to speak? Please come forward. Please state your name for the record.
Counsel, I'm Tom Von Hofgarden, 4702 Howard Avenue. And I've got this written, but I'm just going to tell you what I experienced because it's better for me to just talk that way. You told us to get with the community and get five questions for the survey. We did that. I was told to show up at Park and Rec and work with them to see if they wanted to fine-tune them or not. I was the only person at the Park and Rec Committee that wasn't on someone's payroll or the city... Or the school district, which was the... or the school district, which was the only other item I found out after I got...anyway, after I got stonewalled out of the meeting. Actually, they called it a filibuster. I said at the beginning, they said, "Oh, communications, anybody want to say anything?" I said, "Yeah, I'm here for the Fourth of July. I have questions. Maybe if you can move that up like we do here." So I could go home, and my wife only makes chili on the Fourth of July and made it that night, so I think she was screwing with me. She knew what I was doing, but I didn't want to be there. They didn't want me there. And so Cory was nice enough to say, "Hey, you can move that up so he can leave, and then we can go like we do here." And guess what Pete says? He looked right at me and said, "No, we're going to stick to our agenda." And I said, "Okay, fine. I don't have one. I got one." Little did I know there was only two things on the agenda, so it had been really tough for him to move that one up. Just thought you should know that right out of the gate. I waited till 8:20, and then I said, "I'm getting filibustered out of this whole meeting. They don't want to hear me. They don't want to hear our questions. They don't want to work with me. And you guys put that on us and work with them." Guess this isn't that important. Just like last meeting, you instructed staff to give you something. They didn't give it to you. It was made very clear. Excuse me. Now, I decided to leave that meeting after an hour and 20 minutes of being filibustered because I knew they didn't want to hear it. So I left. I go, "Well, look at the minutes, and we'll see what they came up with." And guess what they did to you? The same thing staff did to you last month. "We don't like the topic, so we're not going to give you your answers." Instead of doing the task at hand, they independently decided that they didn't like the topic. "So we're not going to even talk about it. We're not going to talk about Safe and Sane. We're not going to give you what you instructed them to do." So this is the second time, two meetings in a row, that your staff told you, "Hmm." Now your Park and Rec told you, "Who's in charge of whom?" I believe it's correct. And when she had to chastise the staff last month, I didn't hear a lot of help. You should all take it personally and have a little...to step up and keep these people accountable, because they're not listening to you. They are not following your direction. And this is the second time in a row that they chose to tell you, "No. We're not doing what you instructed us to do." So how much stroke do you have? I got so upset. I take these things personally. I get really passionate, and I call Richard, and I say things I shouldn't say, but I figure maybe he's not taping it, because I can't say it here. I wanted to run for office, but then I thought, "Maybe I should run for Park and Rec, because they maybe have more stroke." What are you going to do? We'll get on the Fourth of July when we get to Fourth of July. You have a bigger problem. Your staff isn't following your direction. Your Park and Rec is not, and you need to handle that.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I see some movement, so I'm going to go ahead and wait just a moment. Oh, all right. Please state your name for the record.
J.M. Iveler.
Thank you.
A lot of people don't understand how the city is set up, and they think that these people work for you. They don't. They work for him. You have four employees. One, two, three, four. These people don't work for you. So when one of these people doesn't do what they're supposed to do, it goes back to him. We have been talking about the fireworks for a while now. The first time it came up, the report was not what you wanted. Okay, that was the first time, a maybe a mistake. The second time it came up, it was still not what you wanted, and the well had been poisoned. All the cities had been talked to. Everyone was now in agreement. And I fully understand that Park and Rec and Cory, I like, and he does a great job usually. He's doing what he wants to do because it produces what he believes is a better show and is a heck of a lot easier. Setting up in the field is a pain, and setting up under tarmac is easy. I fully understand. But that's not doing what you instructed his boss to have him do. That was number two. Number three, last meeting, I remember we were going to have a special meeting on fireworks. That didn't happen. Number four, you gave instructions to a commission on what you wanted, and they apparently didn't come back with anything close to what you wanted. Now, normally, it's three strikes, you're out, but this is four strikes on the same bloody thing. I used to give Mr. Edgar a hard time because he's a chief level executive. You're a chief level executive, Troy. You wouldn't take this from any of your employees in your company, which you currently have a job opening that you've listed. You know, there comes a point in time where, as a C-level organization, which is what you are, you have to take control. This is now uncontrolled. It's an uncontrolled situation where your employee and his staff are not doing what you really want. I know it's going to be mentioned and talked about later on today in this meeting. We're going to discuss the fireworks and everything else, and I fully will be here for that, and I'll make my comments on the fireworks at that point in time. But I've got some concerns that you're getting played, that your staff isn't doing what you want. And four strikes on the same thing definitely has the feeling that you aren't being listened to. Somebody is actively going out of their way to sabotage what the residents and you were trying to do. And again, I'm not pointing at Cory. Cory doesn't work for you. He works for him. So Cory's going out and doing it, and he's not kicking it back, saying, "No, this isn't what they asked for. Go do it again." And that's a problem. And it's a problem you're going to have to address. And I hope the four of you address it next year, because I know that you'll be stepping down, and I hope when Shelley steps up, she'll be part of the solving this problem, because you should be respected by your employees. They should be doing what you want. Thank you very much for your time tonight. I'll be back when the fireworks discussion comes up.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Pete Carver-Hall. I'm up here today to speak as the Chair of the Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts Commission, who you just appointed two brilliant citizens today. And I got to tell you, we must be the most evil, wicked people on the planet that we were able to manipulate seven of your appointed citizens to basically do what this gentleman just accused us of doing at our Parks, Recreation, and Arts Commission. I actually closed the meeting. We normally do a roundtable, and we talk about commissioner items, and I brought up the fact that I was really thankful. I was very pleased that this council has seen fit to come to the commission for our advice, because that's what we are. The part...we're not an elected group. We're an appointed group. We're appointed by you to advise you. We're your citizen voices. I have to tell you, we had two brand-new commissioners at their first meeting this last week. We had a councilperson-elect at the meeting. We had representatives of the school district and the city manager at the meeting. So the fact that he states that this gentleman states that he was the only person there at this meeting and should have somehow given some kind of special treatment is arbitrarily false. There were other people at the meeting. The first item on the agenda had to do with the school district and the city plan for our parks, fields, and the maintenance, renewing a lease that had expired, I think about three or four years ago, the agreement that had expired there four years ago. If any of the people involved with the fireworks had ever attended a Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Arts meeting, they would have known that that is probably the biggest item we have had to deal with in the last five years that I...at least the last five years that I've been on the commission, going back even prior to that. Out of respect for the people that were there, and out of respect for the agenda, and the fact that we had new people there, I'm the one who made the decision not to change the agenda. There was no conspiracy. There was no evil plan. It was basically to address things, and at these people's first meeting, show them how the meeting is supposed to be ran. That was the only reason. He was given his time at the beginning of the meeting, just like you're giving us our time, to present his discussion and his items, and he chose not to. He stepped away. We didn't know he had left. We thought he went outside to have a cigarette or something. When we got to the item, he wasn't there. So how he could speak to what we said and what we discussed overall inside and outside of the minutes, you could listen to the recording. I encourage you all. It was discussed heavily. Every item was discussed heavily. What kind of questions should we ask? Should we even do a survey? And your commission chose unanimously. Okay? Again, this wasn't one commissioner bullying the rest of the commission, or one person, you know, standing on a soapbox and rallying. The commission chose unanimously to send you the response, and I'm sure the city staff will reply to you. And in the end, we said, "We did not believe that a survey was a good idea, because it wasn't going to be representative. It couldn't be accurate. And based on the last survey that we did about the $300,000, and we got, what, 100 responses to it, we felt that that would not be a good use of the time, and we felt to advise you of that, that that would not be a good use of your time." We discussed Safe and Sane, and we brought you a recommendation on that, and then we brought you a recommendation on the fireworks show itself. Okay? We discussed it heavily. He had the right to stay there. The fact that, you know, he couldn't stay there until, you know, some of your meetings that have run until midnight, if I had something that I needed to talk about, I would have stayed for that. If it was important to me, I would have stayed for that. The fact that he chose to leave, somehow that's my fault. I'm sorry. I'm not buying it. So again, I thank you for bringing it back to us. And then in the end, we said, "If the council decides that they absolutely want a survey, please bring it back." After you hear the recommendation of your appointed commissioners, the community members that you have appointed to discuss and bring you advice on this topic, you still want a survey, we welcome that. We'll take it back, and we'll give you those questions that you want. But at this time, I think you should listen to the staff. You should listen to your appointed commissioners and basically make a decision. We had a survey. It was called an election. We elected you to lead us. We elected you to make the decision. To be honest with you, I think a survey is a bit of a cop-out on the part of a council that can't make a decision on their own. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close oral communications. We'll go ahead and move on to item nine, warrants. Oh, I'm sorry. Senator, I apologize. We're going to go ahead and take a break. Our Senator Lou Correa is here. We're going to step down with the council. I saw him. I saw Lou come in. Oh, okay, great. Thank you, Stephen Gray. Thanks for coming. Thank you so much for coming. We know you're busy. Good to see you again.
Mayor, how are you?
For a meeting like this. All right.
I love it.
All right. Well, we're very honored to have Senator Lou Correa with us tonight. We're going to give him accommodation. It's a very small token of what he deserves for all the work that he's done for our area. Senator Correa has extensive background in public service, and has served Orange Central County and Orange County Board of Supervisors as the State Assembly Member for the 69th District. Senator Correa has also served as a senator in the 34th District, representing the cities of Anaheim, Buena Park, Fountain Valley, Fullerton, Garden Grove, Huntington Beach, Long Beach, my favorite, Los Alamos, and Santa Ana, Seal Beach, Westminster, and the community of Rossmore since 2006. Senator Correa has received numerous awards for his hard work and commitment to his constituents, including legislator of the year for American Veterans of California, California Small Business Association, and the League of California Cities. Senator Correa currently serves on many Senate committees, including Veterans Affairs, Education, California-Mexican Cooperation, and the Climate Change AB 32 Implementation. He is passionate about providing health care for children and mental health services for our community, as well as ensuring the affordability of higher education for all children. So therefore, I, Jerry Graham Mahia, Mayor of the City of Los Alamos, with the concurrence of the city council, do hereby commend and wholeheartedly thank Senator Lou Correa for his 20 years of dedicated service to our community and partnership he has provided. Just on a personal note, one thing I wanted to say. He's one of the kindest politicians that I've ever had the pleasure of meeting. He is so good at recognizing those. He has a special award for women, and we were lucky enough to make a recommendation, actually two from our city, and they received awards from Mr. Correa, so we are very pleased that he has taken the time to notice even just the smallest things. And your work with the veterans, I'm sure that our soldiers here today can attest to that and are so grateful. And we just wanted to say we're so sorry to see you moving on, but we know that we'll see you here in the future, and we'll be there to do anything we can to support you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. And as just witnessed a minute ago, I love seeing democracy in action. So all the folks, it took a moment to make some remarks. Thank all of you. Also, I have to say, I've been in Orange County a little bit more than 50 years, most of my life, and if God willing, I'll be here another 50. How's that? The point is, I'm not going anywhere, and this city, Los Al, has been one of those special cities for me for a very long time. You have the Joint Forces Training Base here. Do a lot of work with the vets, with our citizen soldiers. And as I look out here to my right, your left, I know it's the Starburst Academy, folks. Sunburst, Starburst, no, Starburst is the candy. And what's that?
Starbase.
Okay, Starburst. See, you're getting me all confused. But I got to tell you, this is one of those special projects in the state that all of us should be proud of, because as I look at these young men and women, you know, not all of us start off from the same place, but we hope that all of us end up crossing that finish line in a strong way. But for the grace of God, I'd know where I'd be today, and I wish I would have had a program like this when I was growing up. So congratulations. Please take advantage of it. And to your folks...I'm sorry, what was that?
She said, "Thank you."
Oh, I'm sorry. And to your folks back there, thank you for also doing a great job with these folks. Also, you have a little track in the back here in the backyard. I also do a lot of work with Doc Allred as well, to make sure that that operation, that business stays viable here as well. It's been a great run. I've been honored to serve as your state senator. I've worked for you, and I'll continue to work for you. Now, if I may, I also have a small token of appreciation. Thank you, Troy. I'd like to present this resolution to your mayor that appears to be retiring. I don't know why you retired. This is a great business. You know, the rewards in terms of personal satisfaction are tremendous. But I want to give you this on behalf of the 34th District. We represent about 1.4 million people in central Orange County, and it's just a way of us saying, "Thank you for the great job. All those hours you spent here away from the family, doing the good Lord's work. Thank you very much." And I do hope you come back to the business when you recharge your batteries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You look perfect.
His tireless work and dedication has really implemented some great changes, and we are definitely the beneficiaries of those. So, now, we will go ahead and move on to item nine, warrants.
I'd like to discuss the warrants before we move on.
All right. So, why don't we go ahead and pull the warrant? Dean, do you need a staff report, or just a couple of quick questions?
Actually, I want to discuss something with my colleagues.
Okay, great.
It's on this. On page three, at the bottom, page three at the top, on the warrants of 1117, there's a charge on there for the California Association of Governments, membership dues for $1,257. We kind of started this discussion...
Dean, could you repeat the page? I'm sorry, we're having trouble finding it.
It's page three at the bottom, page three at the top, on the warrants for 1117. Terry Topps says, "Read, write, education," and if you looked down about five spots.
Hold on just a minute.
Second page in on the report.
Second page in. I apologize. Okay, go ahead, Dean.
Okay. About the fifth one down, is the Southern California Association of Governments, the annual dues that the City Council is slated to pay for, for $1,257. Madam Mayor, you've been on SCAG in the past. I served on a policy committee on SCAG, and SCAG does good work on behalf of the cities, but nobody on the council is involved with SCAG at this time. Our area representative is the mayor of Westminster, and I can't recall receiving any updates, reports from him regarding what's going on with SCAG. And I had asked my colleagues to hold off on approving this, and ask that it come back to us to approve once we've had an opportunity to discuss it, and see if there's going to be participation. I know staff has had some interactions. I talked to the city manager today about it. Staff's had some interactions, but this organization is set up for elected officials, and if the council's not going to participate, then I really question why we're spending $1,300 of the taxpayers' money for an organization that we are not committed to. And it's the same discussion I'd like to have, I believe, at our next meeting regarding the Association of California Cities of Orange County, which is a sizable more dues amount. And again, there's very limited, if any, participation on our behalf. I just think, policy-wise, we need to be making decisions relative to these expenditures, and thus not annually just renewing dues, when we're not engaged in the process.
Okay, great.
So, I would move approval of the item, with the exception of that one item.
I'll second that.
Before, I do have some other questions.
Okay.
But not on this one, so...
Okay. So, well, anyone else wishing to speak? No? So, we have a motion and a second to approve the remaining parts of the warrants. All in favor, say aye.
Something else on this. So, on 1027, the warrant, 1027, page one, so I do have a question on this one for the city manager, and sorry I didn't get ahold of you earlier, Brett. Under ACE, industrial supply, you know, there's like 850 bucks of socket sets? And I'm not sure, I mean, it seems like these are tools that already exist. I mean, we went on a tour of the city, and is there a justification for this?
If the Public Works Superintendent, Tony Brandonbury, can respond to that one?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, currently this year, our sockets for our mechanic have deteriorated over time. We have been using some Craftsman. What we're buying is Williamson sockets, which are made from the Snap-on Company. They're of very high quality. They are intended to last for multiple years compared to the sockets from Sears, if you would. Still a good socket, but what we're doing is, instead of buying the crew new sockets, we're purchasing sockets of a higher-grade quality for the mechanic shop, taking the sockets from the mechanic shop and putting them out to the public works crews out in the field, therefore trying to save a little bit by spending a little bit to get a higher-quality tool for the mechanic who works on the vehicles.
Because of my experience, typically these things have lifetime guarantees, so that doesn't apply to the situation?
Sears Craftsman does have a lifetime guarantee, but when you're using the tools on a day-to-day basis, and you break, say, a 17-millimeter socket multiple times a week, the time it takes to take that socket, drive it back down to Sears, trade it out, and bring it back in, the higher-grade quality socket, yes, they still do have a lifetime warranty, but it doesn't break as often. Therefore, the mechanic's downtime isn't as much.
Okay, I understand. So, I think that this, when I look at, when I see things like this, and then I've mentioned to Brett, the city manager, over the last four years, I see where we make multiple purchases of shovels and what-have-you, those type of tools, that to me would be, you know, something that we just have in har- I kind of, you know, something that's lasting and reusable. I bring these questions up, because it just doesn't look right to me that, you know, we have a functioning shop in a yard, and I understand tools break and they need to be replenished, but I guess, the question, I guess, would be, what's the depreciation, you know, what's the reality of it, and then what's kind of the schedule amount? Because this is something that ought to be, you know, looked at and budgeted. So, anyways, I'll go ahead, and I understand the explanation, but I think that these are those things that just need to be watched. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anything else? Okay, so we have a motion and a second for all but the item that Dean pulled. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Troy.
Councilmember Edgar?
Aye.
Councilmember Gross?
Aye.
Councilmember Kusamoto?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Murphy?
Aye.
Mayor Graham Mahia?
Aye. Moving on to item 10, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon in one motion unless a council member requests a separate action on an item. Would anyone like to pull any of the items from the consent calendar?
I'd like to pull eight.
Eight?
I'd like to table item K.
Based on my discussion with staff this morning, are you moving forward with item L?
We are prepared to do a staff report on that, if you'd like to pull that item.
I'll pull it.
Okay, great. All right. So, we are pulling item A for Mayor Pro Tem Murphy. Item K is going to be tabled at the request of Councilmember Edgar, and item L is being pulled by Councilmember Gross. Do I have a motion to move the remainder?
I'll move the balance.
Second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item A. Richard, would you like a staff report?
No.
All right.
As part of the fireworks question that's come up, I've been through our minutes, reviewed the last four meetings, where they're almost memorized, and two general comments. One is a general comment about the minutes we now take. We're basically taking verbatim minutes for something that's on the Internet and on our website. Somewhere in between, there needs to be a balance. And somehow, with all the verbatim that's in here, we miss the intention that I was supposed to be on the ad hoc committee with you.
I apologize for that.
I've checked with the people. I'm allowed one call. I told Dean, I feel like I'm in prison. I'm allowed one call. I called Dean. I told him, I asked him, "Did you think I was supposed to be on the ad hoc committee?" He said, "Yes." I asked the city manager, the city attorney, they both said, "Yes." I asked, I didn't need to ask Troy, because he'd made a comment about nomination, made a joke that I was, that he knew I was on there. In fact, members of the audience kidded me about, oh, getting stuck on the committee. Yet somehow, I never was invited to the committee meeting.
I'll happily explain that. Are you finished? When you're ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. That is absolutely my fault. It's an apology. When we got to the end of the item, we did discuss it, but I didn't review the meeting minutes before that and didn't recall it, honestly. I don't get Channel 3 anymore, because we have DirecTV, so I don't have access to reviewing it that way. But I will tell you this. I think part of the reason that we got sidetracked was staff never reached out to myself or to the group to set up any kind of meeting, which was what was recommended, if you recall, and that's in the meeting minutes. There was no action taken to quantify the questions that they wanted. We here on the council came up with a couple of questions. I think Troy had a couple. I might have a couple. Those were listed, but no one took any action, nor did you. And that's not your fault, but I saw inequity that was happening, where these people have come to me for two years, asking for support on this item. And there have been a myriad of things that have happened, and we can discuss that at the item time, but I, not remembering that you were part of the ad hoc committee, reached out to Warren and said, "Hey, can we meet with these people to get the ball rolling?" Because I think they felt that the council didn't really support them. And so, other than me apologizing to you and saying that it was not something that I recalled, I don't think I could do anything more than that, but no steps were taken to fulfill what we had requested, which was a meeting with them, staff, the ad hoc committee, and to get those questions for them, so that they could be discussed as part of the survey. So, other than that, Richard, I don't think I can give you a better answer than that.
Okay. It does say on the minutes, "You were supportive and advised staff would be a part of the group." Did staff come to the meeting?
No, because staff never set up the meeting, and that was their job, not mine. And that's what I'm talking about. There was no attempt to reach out to myself, now that I realize you are the other ad hoc member, you...
Yes.
...to the residents, to take any action. It just kind of got left, and that's my problem with this whole process, and we'll, again, we'll discuss that later on, but there was no action taken. So, as the representative for these people for the past two years, who have asked for my help, I even, you know, I generally don't like to reach out to council members to ask for any support, because I want us to be able to retain our own individual opinions about things. And, Richard, of all the time that we've worked together, I reached out to you one time. Is that correct? Asking for your support on an item?
I don't remember.
Okay. One time, and it was for the fireworks. And it was to set aside more money after the first year. I called you and said, "Hey, Richard, listen, I think I've located some money within the budget that's not going to negatively impact the general fund or the reserves. Can I get your support on this?" I'm not going to tell what your response was, because I'm not looking to, you know, form any kind of opinion, but nevertheless, this has been going on for two years, and it's a process that has not been smooth with staff. That is what I'll say. Brett, did you reach out to the community members to set up a meeting?
No, but I just, no, I didn't. But I will just say, I mean, I had talked to you after the meeting had already taken place, so I did, you know, try to get something together and found out that you had already met with another council member. These things just...
Can I interject? If you did, I think when I met with them, it was sometime after the council meeting, and you knew, because I stated in this in the minutes, that I'm trying to finish this before my term ends. Not to push it through, not to get my way, but because this is a process I've been working on for two years. Okay? So, I'm trying to see it through to fruition. Now...
Yeah, you did say that, and I do understand that. And the thing about it, from a staff perspective, is it does take time. I mean, we have been going through the process of doing the analysis, as has been alluded to tonight, but the analysis of the different alternatives for whether or not the fireworks were going to be moved, what the position was of the community. You did mention that you want to go fast. That was a two-hour-plus meeting that we had with multiple options, multiple things that were discussed. A very complicated issue to try to go through as quickly as possible. The direction was to send it back to the Wrecker Park and Cultural Arts Commission to develop questions. That staff did do that, did put that together. I did attend that meeting.
That was successful, wasn't it?
I think that staff has put together what the direction of the council has been all throughout the time. I was not aware that you had had a community meeting, or I definitely would have made sure that staff was going to be a part of that. We also, my understanding after our last meeting was that the ad hoc was going to be yourself and the mayor.
I think we already clarified that. Just as you forgot about reaching out to the community to set up a date, I also forgot about Richard, and, Richard, again, I apologize, there was no intent. It was really more just to move the item along.
Yeah, and I didn't forget. I just hadn't yet done it. I hadn't yet set that up.
I don't want to belabor this either, but Brett even went so far as to call me and say, "Leave tomorrow free. I believe the mayor wants to have a meeting." And then it turns out, the next day, he'd already had the meeting. So, he was active with me in saying, "Have the time ready."
Well, actually, there had been no time set aside, and I know that Brett and I had kind of touched base towards the end of the timeframe, before the residents reached out to me and said, "Hey, listen, what's going on? And if you feel like you want to make an accusation, feel free." I mean, because I don't want us to beat around the bush.
I don't know what I would accuse you of.
Well, I mean, I think there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of dancing around it. There was no steps taken. You were not contacted until that time, and it was quite some time after the meeting. And so, what I did was, I reached out to them, and they said, you know, "We haven't heard anything. We want to come up with our questions. We want to be proactive. We want to get on this." And so, I said, "Okay, let's get together. We'll come up with some survey questions." And really, all I did to them was kind of keep them within the frame. We can, five questions. What are your five most important questions? Is that your most important question? And luckily, I reached out to Brett and said, you know, Warren and I had met with them. Warren really didn't even talk. He just sat there and listened, said maybe one or two things. But I think this is indicative of how this whole item has been handled, you know, that it's not a priority. And very rarely do we get 20 to 30 residents who come in on an item. Very, very rarely. And very rarely do we have them come into multiple, multiple meetings to say, "This is truly what we want." And yet, we still stonewall them. And you know what? And I've got to give applause to Pete, because he's absolutely right. It was a decision that we could have made. Troy even made that comment. He says, "You know, we can make this decision. We are trying to err on the side of caution, because it can be a hot topic, Fourth of July fireworks." So, we wanted to give the community the opportunity to weigh in, but for the commission to come back with no questions, when that was what we charged them to do, I understand, they have a right to give us their opinion and say, "Hey, listen, we maybe don't support it, but if we did, here's the questions that you asked for." I'd have been fine with that. But again, it's another delay, a delay, a delay, a delay. I started this two years ago. I came to you and I said, "Listen, the people in one part of the area are saying they can't see the fireworks anymore. Can we come up with money?" I had an item that we could have done. It wouldn't have been a negative impact on the city, and there was no support. What you need to do is, you need to bring that up in the budget. I wait for the budget. I bring it up there. Well, you know what? The area you're trying to get money from, that's not part of this budget. You have to wait for that to come up, because it's addressed annually. And that is the community, what is it? The community identification, or it's $280,000 that was set aside by the trash hauler for us to get the word out for, you know, these items. They actually give money to the Fourth of July as one of those items. There was a big-belly trash compactor for $20,000 that they were talking...
I think we're maybe a little off-topic, if I'm, because we're going to talk about this in a minute.
I agree, Warren. I agree. So, Richard, would you like to wait until the...
I'll move the item.
Okay, great. So, I'd like to just take those all three at one time, if we can. We'll go ahead and discuss them. We have the minutes. We can move on to item L, and then we can vote on those two together. Is that okay? All right. All right, so Dean, we're going to go ahead and move on to item L, First Amendment to Professional Service Agreements with HDL, can we get a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Yes, I spoke with Councilmember Gross this afternoon about this item. He wanted to, he wants to discuss, and I'm not going to put words in your mouth, Councilmember Gross, but we can give a staff report in terms of what is in this item, and then answer questions that you and the rest of the council have.
Thank you.
And our interim Director of Administrative Services, Glenn Steinbrick, can give that report about what is in the staff report here. I also want, you know, while I'm looking over at the staff right now, I want to introduce the city council and the community. We have a new administrative services director that started last week. His name is Jason Alimon, and he previously worked as Controller at the City of Riverside for the past five years, and six years before that, at two different accounting firms. So, we're pleased, after a long and extensive search, to have found him and add him to our team, so.
Welcome.
I want to welcome him aboard.
Welcome.
Glenn?
Okay. Mayor and members of council, recently, the employee working for the city in charge of the business license function left the city to go work full-time at another city. She really is the only person in the city who was really responsible for the business license function. So, staff felt that it was an opportune time to take a look at that function and see if maybe we couldn't contract it out and have it done more efficiently by an outside company. We looked to HDL because HDL currently administers property taxes for the city, sales taxes for the city, and they also maintain the database for business licenses for the city. To maintain that database for business licenses, they charge us $3,400 a year, but they don't do anything with the data, all they do is maintain the database, and basically, everything is done manually. If we turn this function over to HDL, it will automate the process such that businesses in the city can renew their business license or apply for a business license online without having to make a trip into the city to do so. We realize there's going to be a learning curve where the businesses may, may need some help doing that, so we're prepared to have the help of employees here with the businesses when they come in, if they want to do it here in the city. We'll take them to a computer and we'll show them how to use the program, we'll show them how to renew their business license, how to pay online. We felt that it was an opportune time, as I said, to do this. The cost for HDL to take over this service from the city, the grand total, is $19,500, which is $13 per business license for approximately 1,500 licenses in the city. So, the $19,500 would be reduced by the $3,400 that we're currently paying for them to maintain the database for business license, and it would also be reduced by another $5,000 that we currently pay for postage and stationery related to business license function. The certificates alone that we purchase for the business licenses, that paper is very expensive. This would all be handled by HDL, and included in that contract would be the postage, the stationery, the collection efforts, the contact with the businesses, everything would be done by them. We wouldn't need an employee to manage this, this function anymore. So, the net cost, as I said in the staff report, is $11,100, and I also said in the staff report that we'd recommend appropriating that money out of the general fund, but we are taking a look at the possibility that we could actually pay for this contract out of the AQMD fund, because the AQMD fund allows you to use those funds when it saves trips to City Hall. By putting this online, we would eliminate the need for businesses to have to drive to City Hall to either renew their business license or, for new businesses to apply for the business license. So, it may not end up costing the general fund anything to have this service contracted out. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, we'll bring it back to the council. Dean, you pulled this up?
Yes. I spoke at length today with the city manager on this, and while I'm supportive of the idea of automating what we're doing, I ask that this be withheld for at least a month to allow them to look into this further and see exactly what we're talking about. Staff has chosen not to do that, so I'm going to go ahead and air what my concerns were, and the community can listen to that and make their decisions accordingly. I'm going to ask that we do postpone this. Several things of concern with this, and, and this is the first time I've heard of the AQMD funds being used for it, number one. Number two, attachment one, is the professional services agreement, which refers to Exhibit A, Exhibit B, and Exhibit C, which were not provided to us in the staff report. And on that basis alone, I think it should be pushed back. It's an incomplete staff report. Secondly, one of the things that apparently HDL is doing is maintaining data to track where businesses are. And part of this process, by doing this with the Board of Equalization, is we expect to find businesses operating in the City of Los Alamitos that have no licenses. And so, we're going to impact those people who, maybe it's a home-run business, maybe it's somebody that just moved in and set up shop but didn't come in and get a business license. We've had that kind of thing happen with the Community Development Department where they open up a shop in the wrong zone, and then we've had to go back and deal with conditional use permits and so on. We have no idea what that impact is going to be, but I think it's unfair to the citizens and unfair to the businesses that we're suddenly going to come in and take aggressive actions in this particular fashion. And one of the things that the city manager talked about today was the possibility of, introducing an amnesty program, so that those people that were caught operating basically without a license, there may be some type of an amnesty approach that can be taken. That's not in this report, it's not considered as part of this document. The other question I had was the fees that are being charged for businesses, how does that compare to other cities and nearby cities? Are we high, low, in the ballpark? And that's something staff doesn't have an answer for, will have to do some research on. I asked the city manager if there was any urgency to this, and he said, "Well, the urgency really was, we don't have a staff person doing it." And it seems to me that that's a bad excuse, that we don't have staff to do something because somebody left. That's not something that I see as a basis for rushing this thing through. I would like it postponed, and I'll make a motion to that effect, until such time as the staff can develop what the fees are that we're currently charging and how they relate to surrounding districts, and, and bring this back to us with a complete report, and, and vet this thing thoroughly, maybe even including the Chamber of Commerce, so that they're aware of it, so that this doesn't come as a surprise. I've had businesses repeatedly, every year, when they get their renewal, say, "Why am I having to fill this out again? It's the same information that's been on file." So, I welcome this, I think this is a good step, I just think we're premature in what we're doing. And I'll leave that as, as the motion, but I'd like to, to make one other comment, and that is, when, when you talk to staff and you try to lay something out, I've not heard anything to the contrary of why the urgency that this has to be adopted and approved tonight. And if staff has that answer, I think it should be provided to us in this particular process, but I'm disappointed, Mr. City Manager, that after the discussion, you were going to talk with the finance people and come back and, and make a decision whether you're going to pull it, to, to do that in advance. By choosing not to do it, I think, again, it's, it's important for me to bring it up to the public and to the citizens, and, so I would put it out there again, that I would move that we postpone it.
And, Councilmember Gross, I just, I also figured if, I appreciate your comments, and I thought they were valuable comments for the entire council to hear as well, so that, we thought it would be still worthwhile to hear the, the presentation by staff.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll bring it back. Anyone else?
I'll second his motion.
Okay. All in favor, say...
So, I'd like to have some discussion, if I may.
Okay.
So, I do understand the, at least from the staff report, on the timeliness, so if this were not to be approved, how, how would the city function in terms of renewing business licenses?
We currently have one employee in the city who's familiar with business license, but she's the accountant for the city, and she's also the payroll person for the city. And she has very little time to handle the business license function. This takes time away from her other duties that she doesn't have time for. When we have a person out there in front, it frees her up to do what her primary responsibilities are, which is be the accountant for the city and do the payroll for the city. If she has to go back to doing the business license, training someone at the front to do it, and we eventually contract this out, it's wasted effort. She's going to be training someone who isn't going to end up doing it anyway, so she'll probably end up doing it herself because she doesn't have time to train someone new, and therefore, again, it takes time away from her normal duties.
I'm going to yield to Councilmember Gross for a moment.
You say there's, how many business licenses in the city?
1,500.
1,500. When do we renew those 1,500 business licenses?
Early in the fiscal year.
July?
Correct.
Okay. How many average business licenses are issued per month?
I do not know the answer to that question.
Well, you're telling us that it's going to take time away from another employee.
I'm not the person in charge of business license, so I don't know the answer to those questions.
Well, based on the report that we get weekly from the Community Development Department, there's usually two or three startup businesses that occur per week. So, the magnitude of holding this off or impacting another employee to try and get this done for a maximum of, say, 12 licenses a month, and the full licensing process, the automation, isn't going to be needed until July. I fail to see, and you failed to convince me, that this needs to be approved tonight. Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, so, I have some more questions. So, thank you for that answer. So, the other part, I think that Councilmember Gross brought up about the fee structure, the, the amount of, that we charge for fees and how it is compared to surrounding areas. I, I thought we did this on a somewhat regular basis, would that be a fair characterization, that we would look at the fees?
No, we haven't, we had brought up the possibility during last year's budget...
We have another fee study.
...to close the gap, to do a study, but the council wanted to postpone it at this time. It's one of the things I talked to Councilmember Gross about today, that it may be advantageous to add that into next year's budget process, to do another fees study, or sooner, if we're going to look at just business license by itself, but we talked about the potential to do a comprehensive...
So, in, in your experience, and how many weeks or months does it take to do a fee study and then ballpark it for 1,500? For our, our type of city, what, what would be the...
It depends on, I mean, the, the advantage would be is, usually you go out and you get a professional consultant to do a fee study, and you're looking at all of the fees, not just business.
How long, how long would it take before we would see something back here?
We'd, we'd go out with an RFP, we'd get the bits back, we'd, depending on the cost, we could, if it's over $10,000, bring it back to the council for the award, and then go out and do the study. So, we're talking about a three-month period, probably.
To get a, to get a study report back?
Yes.
Okay. And so, I, I guess the, the postpone of this one, coupled with a fee study assessment, would be on the order of four months from now.
And, and, right, and it's not appropriate at this point in terms of the fee study itself for a consultant to go out and do it, because ideally, we'd go out and look at recreation fees as well, and other fees and charges throughout the city, it would be an advantage to consolidate the study all at one time.
I see.
Let me just ask one quick question. Couldn't these two items be done separately? Is it, if we enter into this contract with this company, that doesn't mean we can't do a fee study later, or we couldn't have a person handle it for the short amount of time that Councilmember Gross is asking for? Give us a month, come back with some of the answers to the questions that he has, and then implement this, and then you could do the fee study separate, is that correct?
It could be done separately, yeah. The, this software product could be done sooner and then do the fee study independently and separately at a different time, like during the budget cycle.
Okay, I'm going to let the other councilmembers...
I'm not done, so, so, and then, something like this company, the startup, the, when would they actually be up and running fully 100% functional if we were to approve them tonight? How long does it take them to get up to speed?
They already have our database on their computer for business license. It's their program that they're running that does the online registration. As soon as we sign the agreement, they would take over immediately the business license function.
Okay. So, so if we're processing two to three licenses a week, 12, 12 a month, it's, it's not, I, okay, so I think I understand the, the magnitude of the work in terms of new issue business licenses, but in terms of the, the bigger picture fiscal July when that starts, then I understand the, the impact is greater, so I, I think I understand where, where it is, and I don't really sense the urgency on this. I think, you know, maybe if there's some more substantial information for next month, I'd encourage you to bring that forward, maybe another try at this, but I don't think I can be supportive of it tonight as well, but thank you. Back to you.
All right. Any other councilmembers?
Yeah, just real quick, so, business tax per year is about $400,000, is that about right, for a revenue source?
It's pretty close to $500,000.
Okay. And HDL does the forecasting, as it says in the staff report, so they actually do the quarter and quarter forecast so that we can actually firm up our budgets in their mid-year. My question, if we are going to go ahead and delay it, is, can I just ask that you guys give us a total amount that we spend today with HDL as a vendor? I'm, I'm just curious. I mean, when we start talking about a fee study, they actually do a lot of cities already, and I would think they would already have a handle on doing a fee assessment specifically just to this. I know that you're talking about Parks and Recreation, and I'll remind you guys that, remember taxing Troy Edgar, we'd looked at this before, and, you know, I mean, even at your best intentions to raise in revenue, will not get you above the moniker, so, you know, I'm, I'm sure we won't want to rush right into that, but, so we're going to go from outsourcing to a tax increase, I just want to make sure that when we get ready to do this, that we also look at HDL as a vendor, find out what types of services we get, just so we have a holistic view. Thank you.
Mayor Proton Murphy?
I think Councilman Gross has made a good case for waiting, and I agree.
Okay. So, Dean, you have a motion, Troy, you made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could I just offer one more thing for the benefit of you, Mayor, and Councilman Edgar? If you recall back when we first got on the council, we went through and did a, a fee-type study and structure, and found that we hadn't done anything with fees for 20-plus years. And the same thing was decided then, that this would be done on a regular basis, and I thought, rather than the entire gamut of all of the fees, to at least just look at the business license as part of this process, and at least get that part done moving forward. I don't think it needs to be tied to the whole structure. Police Department has fees, there's state law that says we can't charge more for the licensing fee than it costs us to produce the, the service and the revenue on that process. And if the staff isn't set up, and I'm getting the impression from answers that they're not, because of transition that's occurred over the years, a regular schedule for fee review and implementation needs to be in a calendar forecast for years moving forward. My only concern was this was an ideal opportunity with business licenses, just to see where we are. We could keep it where we are, raise it, or lower it, but it would be helpful to have that information and just tie it all into one tidy package, so, thank you, council, for supporting me.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to item 11.
You need to clear out the minutes, right?
Oh, I apologize.
And if, can I, I just, a really short comment on the minutes, because we kind of went really fast through that. Obviously, again, way back, I took on this minutes thing, so I'm not going to take it on again, and we ended up at the far other extreme, and now we have swung the other way. I do, I'm very supportive if we could find a middle ground. Rich had asked me a question right before the meeting, as it pertains to the fireworks, and he says, "Yeah, did you read in the fireworks meeting minutes that you contributed five grand personally to the, to make the fireworks go higher?" And I'm like, "No, they were too long to read, I didn't, I didn't have time to read them all." I mean, if you look at the meeting minutes, just for that one meeting, it's 32 pages. And, not that it's not great history, but I, I just would like to see if we could find a middle ground somewhere in there. Thank you.
That was an intentional faux pas that transpired. We thought, we'll find out if he reads his packet.
Yeah, I heard everybody was in on it, but me.
By putting five grand in there, and it was corrected in the actual copy.
And, and take into consideration, this is a rare case where we have a lot of people from the community, so you have people speaking, and, and so it does take a little bit... from the community, so you have people speaking, and so it does take a little bit more time. All right, so on the item A, I apologize, do we have a motion?
What about K? Did we discuss that?
It was tabled.
Okay, but, okay.
Yeah. So if they manage to proceed, your city attorney, item K was tabled. We don't have to take a vote on it at this point, correct?
If the council agreed to table it.
Sure.
Okay.
Did the council agree to table it?
Not yet.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Well, that's what I was just asking him. All right, so why don't we go ahead? We'll go finish item A, and then we'll come back to K. Is that acceptable? Okay, great. So on item A, the approval of the minutes, do we have a motion?
Yes, I made one already.
All right, and a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. Moving on to item K. Do we need a staff report, Troy, or just we're going to pull the cap?
I think Rich has got, for me, I had some issues, but I'm going to take it up privately with the chief and the city manager, and I'd rather do that. And then if there's anything else to bring back, I would bring it back at that time. Or at least I would make a suggest, and they could decide if they want to bring it back.
All right. So really, what we're doing is pulling the council to see if it's acceptable to table this to a later date?
Yes.
Dean?
Yeah, I'm in favor. I had similar discussions today with the city manager on it, so, fine.
Rich, okay, great, so we're good. Now we're going to move on to item eleven. Discussion item A, discussion of survey questions regarding the Fourth of July spectacular. Staff report, please, briefly.
Thank you, mayor and city council. We will, my part will be very brief, and I'll hand it over to Cory Lake. This is basically based on the direction of the city council at the last meeting, to send the item forward to the Recreation Parks and Cultural Arts Commission. And staff had put together a list of survey questions, put together a staff report, and submitted it to them, and the meeting was held last Wednesday night. And so we will give you an update of what took place at that meeting, and then take any feedback and direction from the city council.
Great, thank you.
Cory? Mayor, members of the city council. On Monday, October the twentieth, the city council requested that the mayor and other council member work with members of the community to develop questions for a community survey. Simultaneously, the council wanted input and feedback from the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission on the same items in order to receive as much information and as many ideas as possible to help the city council make a decision. On November twelfth, the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission meeting, the commission was asked to develop questions for a community-wide survey regarding the fireworks display, as well as the possibility of legalizing safe and sane fireworks. Staff provided the commission with four examples of questions that could be asked of the community, and were asked to develop their own or alter the examples below to best gauge the community's support for the event and safe and sane fireworks. Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts Commission discussed the item for nearly an hour, including the event itself, concerns about the distribution of a survey, the overall concept of a survey, and much more, before making a motion and unanimously approving the following recommendation to the city council. And I will quote the motion per the audio tape. Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Commission is advising the city council that based on the poor performance of previous surveys, and unless willing to invest in a survey, the commission is not in favor of sending out a general survey. Leave the event as is, and we should concentrate our efforts on trying to find revenue sources to offset costs and not include safe and sane fireworks as an option. If the city council does decide to move forward with the survey, then they request to bring back to the commission in order to provide input on the survey questions. It's my understanding that additionally, the mayor and councilmember Kusamoto met with members of the community and could provide that update of the results of their meeting and the questions that the group developed. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
All right, we'll go ahead and open it for public comment.
Tom von Hofkarten for seven oh two Howard Avenue. This is the politically correct version. Just because I didn't wait for a meeting that I knew no one wanted to hear what I had to say doesn't mean that I did anything wrong. You told them, this is what we want. You didn't say, tell us if maybe next time you want us to do it because we don't like it. I'm going to waste my three minutes on something I wasn't even going to say. I owned a company, and if my shop foreman came to me and said, that thing needs a starter, and it's twelve hundred dollars, and I went to my purchasing agent and said, man, that's an expensive starter. Give me five bids. And the next day, I went to him, and I said, what'd you find out? And he said, I didn't do it because I didn't think it needed a starter. I'd fire him. That wasn't what I asked you to do. Staff, we won't go back to last week or month, excuse me, comes back to write what I was saying. What are you going to do? You didn't ask them to say, agree or disagree, and maybe next time we'll do it. What are you going to do? Now, if I have time, which I probably don't, I'll read the politically correct version, and I'll get as far as I can. It said, it started with me on the fourth, it turned into something more disturbing. I thought we had turned the corner finally with our council, but fooled me once, fooled me twice, here we go again. At the last meeting, it was made very clear that staff did not follow instructions. My question is, what did you do, and what are you going to do? This meeting at the Park and Rec, they decided independently not to follow your instruction. So what are you going to do? We are waiting to see whether it's this council or the one coming up. We are going to sit back and watch how you deal with the fact that when you give somebody instruction and they don't follow it, what you're going to do about it. We have our five questions. I implore you to put our questionnaire out. They had a chance to input, they chose not to. So I, left-handed compliment, thank you for trusting us in our decisions on what's right for this community, because we are the ones that it affect, and we are the ones that you all work for.
Do you have your questions with you tonight?
Yes, we do.
Okay, maybe we can.
Someone will bring those up. Thank you for your time, and thank you for waking a sleeping giant.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Hello again, Debbie Feldman. So these were the questions that we came up with at the meeting, and then tonight I added a little bit more because there were some things I think we, as citizens, had no idea that some of the things were happening and where the monies were coming from. And one more thing before I get into this, I just want to address this gentleman's comment to you about a survey. If there's only a hundred people, then those hundred people care enough to make a vote, make a decision, to decide what to do. When we have our elections, they're pretty poor. This year was the worst turnout ever in our country's history, because people are tired of speaking and not being heard. So when you degrade what a survey says or what a survey does, it's my right as a citizen in this city to be heard. You, nor them, nor anybody else can take my freedom of speech away. And when city council asks you to speak or to come up with a survey or to do something, that is your job to do it, not to make the decision.
If you could direct it to us, we try and keep it, you know, more this way.
Got it, got it. Okay. So number one, on the questionnaire, we came up with, and it was easy, circle your answer, yes or no, do you base the, do you go to the base annually to see the fireworks spectacular? Yes or no? Number two, can you see the fireworks spectacular from where you celebrate in Los Alamos? Yes or no? Do you leave, number three, do you leave the city of Los Alamos to enjoy celebrating the Fourth of July to view the fireworks? Yes or no? Or to enjoy fireworks? Number four, do you support, yeah, do you support the sale and use of legal, safe and sane for a two-year pilot program fundraiser program for the city's financial participation in the fireworks spectacular on the base? Yes or no? Now, this is something that I didn't know, and we added this on there. And there, an additional twelve thousand is needed to be added to the current fifteen thousand, which has already been paid for for next year, 2015, to make the fireworks to go higher. That's our understanding. The following year, 2016, the cost will more than double to the price of approximately thirty thousand. As it stands now, and this is what I don't think a lot of people understood, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, that the previous council, somewhere down the road, not going to say who, contracted with Brighamins to use a percentage of our trash bill to pay for the fireworks spectacular.
Go ahead and finish.
A large number of citizens from our city were unaware that this was being done. The purpose of safe and sane fireworks would be a city fundraiser to raise monies to contribute to the fireworks spectacular and not have any excess surcharge on our trash. And number five, do you want the city of Los Alamos to contribute more funds to make fireworks more visible to the entire community?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak? Pete, you're next.
So, once again, it was never our intention to take away anybody's freedom of speech. Let's start with that, okay? And I will tell you, I have a job. I'm an executive at a pretty large company. I sit on that executive board. Our CEO will at times bring things to that executive board for our advice, and you will know very easily what the CEO intends to do. He pays us for our expertise, for our experience on advising him. And on more than one occasion, we've gone to the CEO and told him, we don't feel that that's a good idea, for whatever it is, whatever the project was, whatever the investment was, the executive board is paid to advise the CEO. Ultimately, we serve at the behest of the CEO. And just like we did this time, we came to you, as he stated, with our advice. That's what we are paid so well to do. We gave you the advice. And out of respect for the council, we said, if you still so choose to go down the path of a survey despite our recommendations, we would welcome the opportunity to give you some input on that, on those questions. We felt that was respectful, we felt that was professional, we felt that we didn't take away anybody's right to speak. The gentleman in question had a right to speak before the meeting or before the session started, before the minutes, and he had a right to stick around and speak to the agenda item. We spoke, and we discussed it for hours. As a matter of fact, we've discussed the fireworks show annually for the past ten years that I've been there. We've seen this staff grow this fireworks show despite of every challenge that's been given to them, cutting of funding, you know, challenging to try to get them to pay for parking, and they do a tremendous job with fundraising. And out of respect for them, we chose to basically go and keep it where it is. I mean, this fireworks show, all of those who attended this year have got to say, I walked around, I went to all of the booths, I talked to some of the people that were there. You guys were there. It was probably one of the best Fourth of July fireworks shows we have had in years. And I understand that it negatively impacted one of our neighborhoods, and I understand that, and I get that. But we will never be able to please every single citizen in this community. And I think the survey is somewhat of a fool's errand, and it is our advice to invest that time and effort on finding ways to improve that show. Whether you choose to take it or not, that's up to you as our elected officials. So thanks again for letting me talk.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Jay Mivler again. Now I get to put on a slightly different hat. I'm not going to discuss the political and the business at council, I'm going to discuss the fact that I appreciate that my city council went out of their way to come into our community and talk to the residents. I was there, the residents were active, involved. Direction was only provided in keeping us within the scope of what we were supposed to discuss, and we, as residents, discussed and came up with the questions that you heard Clearly, this is going to continue and continue, and it shouldn't. I remember when I stood here and said, why in the world do I want to be part of a survey? A community survey on the sign that's behind our mayor. I knew I was going to get my butt kicked. I was in the minority, and I knew it. We did the survey. I lost the sign stands. We do surveys. It allows self-participation. Those who wish to have a voice can have a voice. And that voice is not the decision. That voice is a recommendation to the five of you. I believe it was Troy who said, who even suggested that we poll the people or query the people in the last meeting. I think that it's an opportunity for you to hear more directly. And yes, it's self-selected. It's imperfect. Like one of the other speakers said, we had the lowest voter turnout in the history of the United States outside of World War II this year. That's pretty self-selected. You guys are going to make the decision. There is a lot on their plate, everything from, do we do safe and sains for a two-year pilot? Do we shoot them higher? Where do we find the money? But I may ask one more thing to go on your plate. It's been mentioned a couple of times, are we a regional event? I want to know. I really want to know what percent, what the numbers are coming in the gate. And I think whatever we do for 2015, one of the things that has to be done is we have to do a count. We have to know exactly where people are coming from, because if we're a regional event, then we should get, we should be attempting to get money from the other areas in the region to have their people coming to our regional event. And I think that is imperative when you go forward, to keep that in mind, please. Because if we're paying from our tax dollars for this, it's not potentially reaching the right people. And I'd like to have us know what we're doing with it. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, one more. State your name for the record, please.
Javier Mejia, Los Alamos resident. Good evening, council and mayor. One of the things that I've seen over the years and years and meeting after meeting that I've attended in this council chamber and other council chambers in other neighboring cities, and I think that it would be really interesting and very important for maybe the council to set a policy that when there are residents present to speak on an item, that item should automatically move forward. I mean, and I understand that there's going to be times where there's something that's of great importance that needs to maybe be at the front or an accommodation or something, but I don't understand why it wouldn't. It seems like it would make great sense. If you set a policy, then there's no decision, there's nobody that's going to be hurt by saying, oh, it happened or it didn't happen. It just makes sense. You have the residents that are in attendance, especially there have been, we've seen these chambers filled sometimes, and there have been times when it got pushed back, and it seems needless. It seems like those items should take some precedence and make those residents really feel like their voice is important. They're the ones who elected our officials. They really should be heard and should be heard at the beginning of the meeting versus maybe at the end. That might help. I'm not saying that it was pushed back for any reason, but if we had a policy saying so, then it would make sense, and we could do that in any city public meeting, whether it's a commission meeting or a council meeting, that just would make sense. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we're going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
Can we have five minutes?
Sure, we're going to take a five-minute break. We're going to come. We're going to come back from our break, and we're on discussion item 11A, discuss, a discussion of survey questions regarding the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular. We've already had a staff report and public comment. We've now brought it back to the council. And who would like to go first? Does anyone want to discuss the item at all? I guess that's a better question. I think-
I'll go ahead. Thank you, mayor. So, I guess in terms of, let me apologize to Mayor Protam Murphy about the mix-up on the ad hoc. I should have been more diligent, too, and I know that we were just meeting with the community. I did not think or consider it to be ad hoc, so I think it kind of spoiled that, so I do apologize, Mayor Protam.
Thank you.
The, the part that I heard from the folks and, and from the planning, I mean, the Parks, Recreation Cultural Arts Commission, and the chair, certainly resonates a lot with, I think, where I'm at, sort of on this, kind of a mixed kind of emotions on this. I do want to say that I think I really have a difficult time in supporting a Safe and Sane fireworks. And I think what I would like to see, well, I think it's just, I'll go back to what prior council meetings have when people have come forward, and the part that really just sticks to my, my heart, my mind on this is the, the lack of having a family get-togethers that were so severely impacted on this one. And I recognize that, much to my disappointment, where I thought that moving to the tarmac was a temporary measure because of whatever was happening on the base, and I recognize that it's not going to move from where it is, so, and I do recognize the need for family get-together on the Fourth of July. In my own personal case, I would go visit my parents when my kids were younger, and up in the city where they live, they do allow Safe and Sane, and that was something my kids wanted to do. So, we'd go up there, and we'd barbecue for a couple hours, sit around, wait for it to get dark, and then spend about a couple hours shooting the Safe and Sane fireworks in my parents' driveway, and then we'd have to sweep it up afterwards, what a big mess. But I do understand that, hearing the folks, our residents, our citizens, our, you know, people in Carrier Row that want this, and visiting that area, realizing what they've lost by the relocation of the fireworks to the tarmac, I would support the Safe and Sane fireworks. And in fact, I will go ahead and just make that motion that we adopt, I guess looking at Villa Park as a model. Villa Park had tried for a two-year period, and I would suggest two years to go Safe and Sane fireworks. They have some very, I guess, well-written restriction. I'd look to model ours after what they have, and try it out, and let's see if it works for us for two years. I think it's something that would be good for our families, for our residents, that it will help them, and I think it'll also help some of the local nonprofits. That was one of the things that, when I talked with the mayor of Villa Park, Rick Barnett, one of the things that they're seeing is that these booster groups, the Kiwanis Rotary, they're making, you know, they're raising funds to, to help sustain their programs' activities, and so I think that would be a wonderful opportunity for the local community to, to raise monies as well. So, I will make that motion that we try, on a trial basis, Safe and Sane fireworks for a period of two years. And I think that's something that the council can decide, and I'd like, like to look for support from the council.
And I'll make a second. City attorney, is that something we can do on this agenda item? Is there enough latitude?
Ask me that in a less minute.
Sorry about that.
I think you can agendize it, but let me just take a look at how it's listed on I believe it's a sufficient description so that you can vote on it, and, I mean, it's going to have to come back for ordinance, and, and what the vote could be to instruct staff to prepare the possible staff report and, and ordinance for Safe and Sane fireworks.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Discussion.
Yes, please.
I understand what you're trying to do, but I think you're confused based on what the request was, and I cannot support the motion as a result. The, the request was for the neighborhood to create a nonprofit, and they were going to market the Safe and Sane with the proceeds specifically going toward continuing the show on the base. You made reference that it would be good for the nonprofits in the community, meaning the Boy Scouts, Precious Life, whoever else wants to do it. If that's what your intention is, I don't believe that's what the intent of the people were, and, and that needs to be a little bit more clarified from my standpoint. One thing that I, and, but let's just go ahead and take a vote on it, and then I would like to offer something as a, as a possible substitute if it doesn't pass.
If I may, so Councilmember Grossall, I'll address it. So, I was not confused. I do, I believe I understood some of the prior discussion, that members of the community would band together, create a, I don't know, some type of nonprofit, raise monies, and perhaps give the money to the city to alter the type of fireworks. I'm not going to go that specific. I think we ought to just take the step first of allowing it, and then the, the structure in which nonprofits may form or apply and all the details, I think that'll be up to how we look at other cities and how they do it, and guidance. So, that, and then I, and just for the record, Boy Scouts will not do that. That's something that's prohibited against their charter. They will not allow Boy Scout groups to sell fireworks, but thank you for that. And then, yeah, it was, it was in general, not specific.
Appreciate the clarification.
Okay. Troy, anything?
Yeah, just got to make sure I'm clear. So, we're doing, the, the motion to do Safe and Sane is for charity, to, or not charity, but to do fundraising for the city, but, but it's not. It's actually for the charities. So, I, again, I, I thought that the Safe and Sane was really to start to be able to fund a better fireworks show that we would maintain on the base. So, I guess I just wanted to have clarity on, on that, if I could. I guess after even what was said, I'm still, is a vote for Safe and Sane a vote for the continuation of the base, really to raise the 12,000 to $30,000? Or is it to start down a path of Safe and Sane, cut the cord, and, and never look back?
My, my understanding was, from the residents, both when they spoke here, and they reiterated it when we met with them, was that they would love for the show at the base to continue as long as they can enjoy it. And, and so they are willing to do the work, which was discussed at the last meeting, that they're even willing to, if we allow Safe and Sane, have a booth, staff the booth, and guarantee that that money will go to the city as a way to provide higher fireworks, or in the instance that the money runs out, to not have a drawdown on the general fund or the reserves, but to try and raise enough money to fund that potential $30,000 deficit we might be at later on.
So, just so I'm clear, then, we're all working towards, right now, the end objective is to go higher, to make it a better show than it is today?
Well, I think their concern is, if you don't mind me speaking back and forth like this, their concern is that even if the fireworks go higher, that they still might not be able to see them. They would love to, because as Councilmember Kuzamoto said, they've built their family traditions around it. And just to clarify, it's not just one neighborhood, it's that whole side of the city that has come. It's just that the people from Carrier Row have been nice enough to come forward and express their opinion. So, it doesn't just benefit one neighborhood, it's, it's the whole side of the city on that side that can no longer see the fireworks. So, I don't know if that answered your question or not.
So, in that scenario, then, for the next year or two, we would have both? And we really wouldn't be able to test whether going higher would make it an acceptable show, correct? It would just have Safe and Sane and a suboptimal fireworks show?
Well, no, I mean, I, I think their hope is to help us generate money, to have the fireworks go higher, because they'd like to see that, but they'd also like to allow themselves to have those family traditions be in place in the instance that the show still isn't visible to them. And I think, you know, one last thing that I'll say, and I'm going to pass it forward, because I don't want to argue about this, we've gone back and forth about it enough, I think, is that there's a trend in Orange County where cities are doing these two-year programs, they're putting it on the ballot, and they're finding that the people support it, and they're actually reinstituting Safe and Sane fireworks. And the gentleman who was here from TNT last time said there were five cities. There are now two more cities that this, this last election just passed the right for them to have Safe and Sane. So, I think there's a trend, and Andrew in the audience, he's from Los Alamitos High School, he had me sign his papers, and I said, if you were allowed to do Safe and Sane fireworks, would that be something you support? He goes, I would love that. I would love to be able to do that. And I think, kind of to some degree, we're depriving a generation from being able to celebrate at their homes, have the same kind of experience we did, to celebrate our independence. And it's unfortunate when we have this opportunity to do this, but Warren?
Thank you. So, not to overthink things, so, to address Councilmember Eggers, I don't want to design it here. The thing that would strike me, if we try and legislate, set up a policy where it's going to be a fundraiser for the city to contribute towards the, the spectacular on the base, I, I think that's going to be a, I would not support that, to be honest, because I don't know that we're going to get the, the labor, the staff, the manpower to do that. I think the reason that these nonprofits are, are successful is because they get free labor. They get free labor, someone's going to camp out by the fireworks stand, they're going to staff it for four or five days continuous, and I don't see that something that we ought to be trying to design. I, I really don't.
But in that, Warren, the camp out, they raise the money, then are we going to go ask them for money?
I think that'll be, that'll be part of the, the setting up of the ordinance and the fee structure. I think there's all kinds of ways to, to do that. I think there's people that, you know, the, whoever happens to be the landowner that will allow such a, you know, stand on their property, they're going to get some revenues from that, so, and then, you know, we talked about business licensing earlier, there'll be, I'm sure, a license fee that we would want to impose for those type of things.
No, not me.
Well, no, but seriously, I think, I think there's going to be a cost of regulation, there's going to be an impact to police, there's an impact to fire. I think those are just fees that we have to look at, the reality of those. But, but I think that if we try and whittle it down to something really just concise, I don't think that that's going to be our job. I think it's really to, you know, set it up, set the ordinance up, let's look at it, and let's see where it is, and who knows? The ordinance may not pass when it comes back here, when we start really looking at it. But it's happened before, it was in the city before, it's in neighboring cities, Villa Park just passed theirs, Huntington Beach has passed theirs. There's models of what other municipalities do. And then, you know, I, I would say, you know, if I'm a, if I'm running a nonprofit in the city, and I'm looking to try and raise money, and I've got a piece of land that I can set up a stand, I'd be certainly interested in trying to raise money for my nonprofit. And even if it's going to be 30 cents on the dollar versus 40 cents on the dollar, I might go for that, because, you know-
It's free money.
People are making money, which is unfortunate, but, you know, that's just where we are. So, anyways, I'm not trying to make it too restrictive, I'm just saying, let's, let's see where we go with this one, and put it to staff to craft up the right language.
Yeah, I, I guess my closing comments are, I thought I had heard the last, in the last meeting, at least three or four of us take a pretty strong stand against Safe and Sane, and I think the middle ground for me was to see what the will of the people were, and that's why we entertained the survey. I don't think the survey, for me personally, came back and met the expectation of, of the questions being refined enough to be legitimate, where they couldn't be over-influenced by, like Debbie said, the people that care the most. So, I don't know, I guess I'm interested, I guess if you think about the bigger picture, I mean, what are we solving for? If we're trying to make a better Fourth of July, you know, to try and get there faster, then maybe we should be trying to go up, and I don't think the Safe and Sane, based on your description, is going to, to solve that. It's going to create a different stream that has great benefits to the community, but maybe not to the fireworks show. And again, I guess I'm still, I, my perspective where I live, I, I can't see it, so I have to enjoy it, being on the base, and it was the best show that I've been to on the base. And to balance staff's input that you get from the community and everybody else, I, you know, it was very, and I think that's why the, the Planning Commission probably, or the Parks and Rec weighed in so heavily, because they were all there, and they seen it, too, and, you know, having three boys and going there, you know, and I'm always going in. I've never been to a barbecue or something and been able to watch it. It does seem like a community event. But as a homeowner, I'm, I'm really not supportive of Safe and Sane fireworks for a lot of different reasons. I've seen a house burned down growing up, same type of thing. I would just like to be able to figure out, I was willing to entertain it if we had an end objective, but it seems like we're kind of going two different ways. Keeping open mind, but I, that's just where I'm at right now. Thank you.
Richard?
Yeah, I'm disgusted. The clouds have now parted, the Trojan horse has arrived, okay? Last time we spoke about we would need police, we would need fire, we would need all kinds of reports. You agreed it would not happen by December, yet the first question out of the box on this issue is no discussion? Boom, Safe and Sane. The local nonprofit angle is, is a joke. The people have said they're going to raise the money to shoot the fireworks. This, if this, I'm not going to disagree that this is, this may be quasi-legal public notice, but I guarantee you, if you, if you advertise Safe and Sane, this room is full, okay? There's not six, seven people out here. This room is full. This has just been disguised from the moment the Safe and Sane was brought up to, as a fundraiser, okay? Now I know I wasn't invited to the meeting, very clear to me now, okay? No doubt, no doubt in my mind, or anybody else in this room who heard what the ad hoc committee was supposed to be. The, I've studied the minutes for the last four months, went back and looked at the meetings. I just got five minutes from Tom Van Hofgarden that the most important thing to happen right now is this survey. Your guy, and the first thing out of the box is let's approve Safe and Sane. You gotta be kidding me. You just gotta be kidding me. This, this is, this is how we're going to do it? Because you're, you're leaving office, that we're going to rush through? Police doesn't get to weigh in? Fire doesn't get to weigh in? The, the rest of the community doesn't get to weigh in? It's, to me, it's unbelievable. It is unbelievable that you could come up, first out of the box, Warren, and say, I'm for Safe and Sane, okay? How did we get from the Carrier Row coming in and saying, the show is not what it used to be? That was their complaint. The show is not what it used to be. And you came to me and said, what do you think about shooting them higher? And I said, I think it's ridiculous.
You said you wouldn't give any more money?
Yes.
That's right.
Because I could see many other uses for this, for this money. However, people like Mike Spillane, they came in, they, they kind of said, you know, this really affects more people than you realize, and I came around to the fact that maybe $12,000 could be found, especially since the base, the project makes about $9,000. So, we're not really looking for that much in the difference. Okay? So, I'm going to make a substitute motion, that we agree to shoot the, to spend the $12,000 to shoot the fireworks higher. The citizens of Carrier Row understand we will work with the base to provide the optimal property viewing that we can, and they have to understand that this is a joint, an operating naval base, that helicopters could come in, and we may have to go back to where we were last year, okay? But we will, we're going to take away the fundraising aspect that the Safe and Sane was brought under. We're going to find the money. We're going to, the city, there's enough people out here who want it, we're going to pay for it. We're going to shoot them higher. At, at the event, we will find out where the people come from, so we can answer that question, how many people are interested. But make no mistake, this is our signature event. Nobody has ever come into this meeting and say, eliminate it, or it's not, it's not good enough. The only complaint is the location, okay? We're trying to address that. So, my motion is, shoot them $12,000, shoot them higher for one year, and do a survey to ask the people where they're from. They have to show their ID to get in the base. That should not be hard to do at all.
I'll second the motion.
All right, so we're going to bring it back for discussion. Well, if we're going to make accusations-
I have the right to get a vote on my motion.
There's, it comes back for discussion, Richard.
No, it doesn't.
After, there's a second, yes, it does. Carrie, is that correct? When it comes back, there's room for discussion?
Second and then discussion.
Right.
But, I'm not sure that motion is, falls under this agenda. I mean, it was on previous agendas, but now it did kind of switch to Safe and Sane and other things. My suggestion is you vote on Safe and Sane, and you agendize it for next time, for Councilman Murphy's motion on spending the $12,000 and so forth. But it does- But it does, anytime there's a motion and a second, there is discussion after that.
So a question, Mayor. I've been confused on, I mean, what do you mean? This is about the Fourth of July fireworks spectacular and one option is, I mean, as long as it's Safe and Insane, we could vote on it, but...
It's actually for a survey. And if I can speak, Troy.
Sure.
Since we're going to make accusations that this is a Trojan horse and that this was the plan all the time and that the fundraising part of it is ridiculous, I will say, there's perceptions out in the community that this item has been being deferred and delayed. And the fact that your neighbor is on the commission and is the chair and drove the agenda item the majority of the time...
Pull your strings so you can stand up, Pete, okay?
Well, Rich, if you're going to make, look, if you're going to make accusations...
Come on, come on.
You get serious then. Instead of saying this is a Trojan horse...
I pulled his strings.
Richard, I have the floor. You have your opportunity to speak.
No, no, I'm still screaming though.
Yeah, that's great. Well, what we're saying, though, is, is the fact that we hoped for a survey so that the people could say whether they supported it or not. That was our goal. Okay? And so we send it out to the commission, which was the recommendation of the council. And so we did that, and it came back, nothing. The residents have come here tonight and submitted their questions for us to discuss. But from the way things look, if you want to talk about Trojan horse, is that you never wanted this to happen, so there were going to be delays, so we're going to keep it from happening before I was here. Now, you talked about rushing this through. Richard, this has been being discussed for months now. Okay? So the fact that I'm trying to rush it through is ridiculous. And it's a farce for you to make that kind of statement. I will say, and I'll come to you just next, that the intent was for a survey, but it looks like it's being squashed so that that can't happen in a timely manner. So you have a right to your opinion, but the residents are here saying, we would like to do this. We'd like to survey the community. And if people come and say they don't support it, then that's, that's the democratic process. That's what we're hoping for. So whether or not you agree with it or you find it laughable...
I find it funny you can say it with a straight face.
Well, I find it funny that you're speaking out of turn. So Warren, why don't you go ahead and go?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm looking at Chair Carvahal from the Parks and Recs and Cultural Arts. And I think you said it best, Pete, about we get to decide. And at a prior meeting, Councilmember Edgar, I think you had kind of gone down the path saying, are we using a lot of city resources, both staff and money, to host a big party for the region? And I kind of, you know, my gut feel is I think we kind of do. And not that it's a bad thing, but, you know, when we have the people that we represent asking for something different. Now, the part, I think if you recall, both Mayor Protam Murphy and Councilmember Edgar, I was pretty direct with staff about what will it take to move it back to its old location? When it moved over to the tarmac, it was my understanding that was a temporary place for it to go because of the construction or whatever have you. And I've come to the realization, based on the last couple of months, the, we're not going to go back to the old location, no matter how much I would wish or want, or I guess we can maybe use contacts or political capital to try and make it to go back. But I think that we've already, as one member of the community said, we've already poisoned that well. So it's unfortunate. Now, this is not a Trojan horse, Mayor Protam. I'm sorry you feel that way. I've had this, I guess, desire after hearing from the last time the members of the community came up here and talked, right after the Fourth of July spectacular, that they said they can't see it. They, that their friends aren't coming over, their families aren't coming over, they're not having the parties like they used to. We talked about the fireworks going higher, but there's no guarantee that that's going to even be well received. In my neighborhood, like I've said before, we would go over to the school grounds, Laurel Park, we'd have our parade, we'd have our picnic, and that night we'd go and watch the fireworks. Now, it's a joke. We can't see anything. We can see the illegal bottle rockets, what have you, from the neighboring cities, but we don't see anything. In fact, I think we can see old ranches fireworks better than we can see ours. And old ranches even further away. So I'm, I'm very much personally against Safe and Insane. I bring this up because I hear the people what they want. Now, if we're going to design a, or create an ordinance that says it shall be, all the proceeds shall be used to go and offset the base fireworks, so be it. I think that'd be something we can certainly entertain. Now, the other thing I think you have to realize, four years ago, we were going to kill this thing because we didn't have the budget. So I don't know why it's such a big deal if we were ready to kill it four years ago that, or more than, was it four years ago? 2010. It was going to, it wasn't funded until a member of the community, not even our city, came through with the necessary funds to conduct it. So it's one of those things that almost died. So I still think that hearing the folks, the people, our constituents, what they want is that opportunity to have time together with friends and family, have their barbecue, have their, sit around and watch these things to celebrate the, you know, our nation, our independence. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
I don't want to belabor it, but I want to bring up a couple of things that has been said earlier about the fact that, you know, people from other areas come and it's our tax dollars. It's the local, Los Alamos is hosting this thing. And in all honesty, the city of Cypress carries about a third or almost a half of the expense, both labor and costs. They actually are the ones that contract and pay for the fireworks. Ross Moore kicks in, I believe, in the neighborhood of four grand, and Seal Beach kicks in money. So it isn't something that Los Alamos solely pays for. It is for the entire community. I think Cory has the figures of where the funds come from. And sponsorships help to offset the balance of it from the standpoint of labor costs and so on. For the, from what the city attorney says, Mr. Murphy, or Mayor Protam Murphy's motion is out of order. And so we're back to the original motion to ask staff to draft a Safe and Insane ordinance and bring it back to the council, I guess, at our next meeting. And so rather than continuing to bait this ad infinitum, as we've done for the last two or three meetings, I'm going to call for the question.
All right. Troy, anything?
You know, Jerry, you said something on the subject of the staff item, and I guess city attorney...
Could I make a point of order when you call for the question? There's no more debate.
You called for the question. Let's go for the vote.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to support a two-year pilot program for Safe and Insane fireworks, and we have a...
Negative.
Pardon me?
Nothing was said in his motion that it would be a two-year pilot program. He said to bring back an ordinance to allow for Safe and Insane fireworks at the nonprofits.
My apologies. And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion fails. Okay, so we come back to the original item. We are talking about a survey. There were questions presented. There were questions presented by council at the last meeting. I think some of the questions that came from the residents mirrored what the council said, and maybe that's where they came up with that, trying to show the council respect for their input. So...
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'd like to make a motion directing staff to come back at our next meeting, since we can't discuss it at this time, of putting in the additional $12,000, shoot the fireworks this year higher. Find out as the cars come on to this, onto the base through the parking security to try and get as much indication of what community they represent. We could potentially even put volunteers out to catch the walk-in volunteers that, or the walk-in audience that comes in so that we get an idea of where the information comes from. And during that event, or if the council wants to do it, survey the people in Carrier Row in suburbia and the Highlands and find out if they feel that shooting them higher brought back the quality of life. That way we have an idea from doing it this year, and then we'll just need to figure out a way to increase sponsorships and revenue sources for the following 2016 year.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Okay, so we'll bring it back for discussion. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we move forward, which, with the intent of this item, though I felt strongly that it was not going to have support, for the questions to be gone over by the council to come up with a survey, as we've done before in the city, to make sure that the people get to weigh in on it and that that survey can have five to six, to whatever a number of questions the council deems necessary in order to get a real feel for where the community is at with the annual fireworks show at the base and whether or not they would support Safe and Insane, whether it was for a nonprofit to pay for the fireworks, or whether it was just to do it for the nonprofits. And that's my motion.
I will make the second for the sake of having a discussion.
All right, so we can bring it back. Richard?
So this is how we're going to proceed. We're going to introduce the item. You're going to decide, there's not enough votes for it, so we're going to go straight to the Safe and Insane. When Safe and Insane fails, oh, maybe we should go back to the item now. Is that, that's what you're telling me? Maybe now, since we couldn't get Safe and Insane, we should fall back to the question about the questionnaire. There's two questions here. One is Safe and Insane, the other is shoot them higher. That's really all it is. The rest of this is just fluff. Okay? Let's call it what it is, agendize it, and vote on it either way.
I thought that's what we had already done, was we agendized this. But with the occurrences of what have led to this meeting tonight, where we were giving direction to have questions presented to us so that we could consider them, as we've said earlier in the night, let's take it to the commission, let's give them an opportunity to weigh in. We did that. They didn't have input. So to the community, who I am the representative for them, they said they didn't feel like they were going to get any support on the survey. I haven't talked to Warren. Warren made the motion to support Safe and Insane. I support that. It was this totally separate item. So as far as, as far as moving forward with the survey, that's what we tasked the commission to do. They didn't have any input. The residents have come again, I think this is the third meeting in a row, to give us the questions that we can go over, we can tweak them, we can add to, and that's what the agenda item was for. But by your demeanor tonight and the things that you said, it leads me to believe that their impression was exactly right, that this survey was never going to get a fair shake. Anyone else? Warren?
So I second this, just for the sake of discussion. So, you know, Councilmember, or Mayor Protam Murphy, this was my own doing. It was not in collusion or in coordination with anybody else. And again, personally, I am not in favor of Safe and Insane. So I, you know, it's a very difficult one for me to try and decide. Now, with respect to the survey, I'm not going to support the survey. I do hear what Chair Carvahal has said. I don't think it's going to provide actionable data that we can move out on. So I think you said it best, Pete, that we can make a decision. So I'm ready to make a decision either way on this one, but I think in terms of the survey, you know, I think we've got positions that we're all kind of carving out, and regardless of what the survey is going to say, I think it's not going to, it's not going to matter to us. So I think we ought to just try and cut to the chase, make our decisions, and then move forward. So, and I do want to comment on Mayor Protam Murphy, your idea about, let's shoot it higher, let's take the data. I think that that's a good idea. I think we ought to, and then Councilmember Murphy, I think we ought to just go ahead. If that's the best we can do out of this situation, I think we ought to move forward with that one. With that, I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
All right, so we have a, do you want to withdraw your second then, Warren?
No.
Okay. All right, so Troy, you have any other input?
The only thing I would say is, I think you see, you probably don't have the votes. I mean, do you really want to take it through a vote, or do we just move on to something we could try to get some agreement on?
Absolutely. I just asked Warren if he wanted to pull his second.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'll go ahead and pull my motion, since it's not going to have support. And Dean has a motion, and then there's a second. Dean, will you repeat your motion for us, please?
Motion was to direct staff to, yeah. I know what, I know what I was thinking of at that point, and that was, let's just go ahead and direct staff to find the additional funds. Go ahead and shoot it higher. Do a study as people are coming in the gate, which should be easy to do, of what city, community they are. We can identify the four or five close by. And then if they're not in that area, then we know that as well. And perhaps do the same thing as they come on, walking on, and try to get some feedback from the neighbors that have the concern after the show. If shooting them higher helps bring the quality of life back, we'll know that. We'll then have to figure out how we fund that for 2016.
Just one point of clarification. So, thank you. So with that, I'd like to look at staff. So we know we can shoot them higher. We have the necessary permissions. The fallout zone is going to increase. It won't impact on the West Guard Grove residents, so that's all just a matter of budget then. So if this passes and we find the budget, then there's not going to be any reason not to shoot it higher. I mean, I want, I want to know that.
As far as I know, in our discussions with the base and with the fireworks company, there's no hiccups, obviously, you know, like Mayor Protam Murphy, if something happens on the base, they, something changes, obviously, we're left up to their discretion, but nothing is foreseeable at this time.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
Well, hold on, I just want a clarification, too. So if, since we're going to give direction to staff, you know, if we don't believe in surveys, then should we believe that after we do the fireworks and spend 12 grand, that we can actually get a survey? Just seems kind of crazy. I mean, you know, the process, and Pete had talked about it for 10 years, since I've been around, you know, we do a postmortem on the Fourth of July every year, and you have an opportunity during that time period to weigh in as a community and as the commissioners. I mean, I don't want to get too extensive on this survey thing. I mean, if it doesn't fly now and it has this much focus, it's probably not going to fly in the results, so we're just creating a problem down the road. So I would ask that, you know, Dean, how far do you want to go on some sort of a survey post the fireworks? And probably the other thing I would be interested in, that's question one. Question two is on staff. You know, we start having discussions with Cypress and all the other folks, especially Cypress, since they're a payer, and they seem to have an elastic budget that goes with us, because our, both of us have had to have kind of advances sometimes. You know, are, you know, are we going this one alone on going higher? Because everybody benefits in this. And, you know, my biggest concern is if we're not going to get past this thing tonight, you know, we've still got to kind of integrate in with this regional group. And, you know, we, some of us have taken a lot of years to try to get that regional group to a point where, you know, they can depend on us. And I don't know, I'm just concerned that the message it sends, you know, that, you know, it's sort of like the JPA that deal, we're having right now with Westcom, right? You know, we need to make sure, if somebody else pushes in and says, no, I want this, I want that, you know, we're starting a precedent with that group that I'm not sure how we're going to deal with that. So city manager, just one minute overview. And I, to be honest, I don't know if the Parks and Recs commission weighs in, and it kind of cleanses that discussion before it gets into our approving the budget, but I'm kind of interested in that before I vote on this motion.
And we do have community partners. My opinion is that, I mean, and we can confirm with them, but if the city of Los Alamos is going to appropriate the additional funds, it's all coming out of the general fund for the city of Los Alamos. We still would have our, I would anticipate we'll still have our partners in putting the event together. And for one time, if this, when we bring it back, if this passes for one time, the city would appropriate the monies for it. And one year, they would be shooting higher. Corey, anything different you can leave?
But I mean, there was a lot of different configurations. And, you know, as a financial guy, or one of them up here, I am concerned we're going to, what, put 12 grand in to go higher. The math equation works like this, if I remember. You put in 12 grand more, they go higher, you get a lot less. That's going to have a material effect on everybody that's going to be a part of this. So, you know, is 12 the right number? I mean, if we're going to go in and really try to respond to our residents, and they're clearly the ones in Carrier Row are not going to be happy at this point, should we budget what it would really be to be a spectacular show that has a halfway chance to being successful? Because I got to tell you, for me, wanting to spend 12 grand up in smoke like that, when I'm, we're sitting back on 15, we're going to be $15,000 to $100,000 short next year on money that we need to spend on police. So, I just, I'm really concerned, and it just feels like we're in Vegas, and we're down, or doubling up right now. And it just makes me feel very uncomfortable.
The additional $12,000, the $12,000 would be in addition to what is already budgeted. So, we already are budgeted for an $18,500 show. So, it would take it up to a $30,500 show, basically adding, I, we'll keep looking through my paperwork, but I want to say about 180 to 200 shells on top of the 2,200 that we already shoot off. Most of those shells will be six, I want to say six, six and eight inch shells. So, the higher tier shells will go up about 600 or 800 feet versus the three and four inch shells, which are lower. So, if I remember, the fireworks guy, he said, if you want to add an extra 12 grand to the show, the show will be even more spectacular than it already is. You're adding to it, and they'll be bigger, they'll be higher. Obviously, it's only a couple hundred out of, you know, say 200 shells out of 2,200, so now 200 out of 2,400 shells. So, those number of shells, it's not going to be the whole show, will be significantly higher. Those number of shells will be higher.
Okay. And Mayor, may I, just for a moment, to Mayor Protem, he, I think he had a question. He just asked me on the side.
That was the intent, was to add to the show, not to subtract it. The base budget will pay for the last year's show, and the 12,000 we're going to be on the hook for is going to pay for the higher shells.
Okay. And the one-time shot, is it really one time? I mean, I mean, are we stepping in? Look, if it's not one time, and it makes that group happier, doesn't solve it, I'm still not 100% sure it will solve it, then we're kind of getting on an annuity. If we don't start having discussions with our regional partners on the share, then forever, in perpetuity, we will own that extra increment. You know, so I guess I'm just trying to say, I'm with you, I, but I would like to have the parameters of how does staff deal with this in the region so that we don't buy, it's always the cost of the fireworks plus the 15 extra grand that Los Al kicks in every year. You know what I mean? Because this is the next 30 years.
Could I interrupt for just a second? The motion was to direct staff to bring this back. So, we get to talk about this again for another two and a half hours next one, and, and beat it to the pulp, rather than trying to think it through now. If it, in my mind, if it doesn't work this year, c'est la vie. We know. Because the money's not there for the following year, and that's part of the problem.
But it looks disingenuous to say we're going to do it one time, to try and make these folks happy, when we, we won't even trust any sort of a survey. We won't go through and look at this. I mean, we might as well plan for it financially, and that, that's what I'm thinking about. I'm looking five to 10 years down the road. I don't want to bite off on an annuity that we can't afford.
Right. And if I may, Troy, that was what led us to the survey initially, was that Mayor Protem Murphy said, let's come up with the money, which was a great offer. Councilmember Edgar said, I don't know where we're going to get the money. I agreed with that. The money for the fireworks show will go away, I believe, in one more year, and then we're down another 15,000. So, that's where the initial conversation for, what are our options? Well, if we, if we allow Safe and Sane, then potentially that could be the fundraiser to continue the show. So, not going to belabor it, but I'm with you, Troy, and I don't know that they think that we're just saying we're going to do this for a year. I don't know that we can come up with the money, and I expressed that to them. We can say it now, and when budget time comes around, I mean, it's obviously something that could be cut, because it's not, it's not mandatory. It's not an expense we have to pay. So, in an attempt to represent them, that's what the survey was about. And when it looked like there was some maneuvering behind the scenes to keep that from happening, it was, as you said, a little disingenuous to me. Whether that's the right perception or not, that's my perception. And so, we were going a different way, I guess, when Warren offered for the Safe and Sane. It took us to a place where we could then potentially raise money to provide for the future years. Because if we have a deficit next year, like we had this year, we're talking about putting parking meters throughout parts of the city, and that's not going to make people happy. We know that. There are other increases that are going to come, that we know that they're not going to be happy about. We had people who stepped up and said, listen, we want to be part of the solution. We don't want to just be the problem. We want to be part of the solution. We want to help the city. So, to me, the questionnaire going out seemed like a good idea. And, and as one of the speakers said, when we wanted to put, in God we trust, Dean, you brought that forward. And we did a survey. We walked door to door. People put their input in. It was in favor, and we put it up. I don't know why this would be any different than that. I understand that it can be a heated issue. I get that. We've talked about this for, I think, three or four meetings now, and if anybody's watching, then they know that. And if they had concerns, they could have come. Pete came tonight, because he has a concern, and I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, if what we're saying is we've done all these meetings, and we've taken all these steps, and we've gone through all these hours, and we're going to do nothing, that's a waste of our time. It's a waste of staff time. It's a waste of the time of the people who came to two and three meetings to tell us how they felt.
So, to close off my comments, Dean, I will take your advice. I think I, just in the general category of just the regional solution, I'm interested, and, and the mechanics of that. Thank you.
Okay. So, Dean, you made a motion. Did we have a second? I've lost track.
Yes.
Okay, we've got a second. So, we'll go ahead and take a vote on Dean's recommendation. Any further discussion?
So, can I just repeat it, just to make sure we get the whole entire? The motion, direct staff to bring back an item at the next meeting, appropriate the $12,000 to shoot the fireworks higher, find out during the event, when the cars are entering, where the people are coming from. So, doing a, doing a check on the people that are coming in, where do they live? So, we would appropriate it, and the feedback, the survey afterwards, that's in, or that's, is that in?
You know, I don't know that a survey, I think we're going to get feedback, if they're happy. If they're not happy, then we're going to know that bumping the money up was not the answer, and then we've got a, we've got a different direction of what to go. I would implore those people that have come in and spoken, as well as anyone else out there, that if this passes in December, we get one more shot at it. If it passes in December, then we're looking for them to help tell us that took care of it. We're back to where we like to be. If not, then we're on a whole different parameter, because we're going to lose 15,000 in 2016, in addition to not committing to the 12,000 at this particular point. So, that's still almost 30 grand more that's going to be, have to determine. That, I think, is when we're going to need to reach out to the partners. We're going to need to figure out fundraising-wise. I think you made the question, if not at the last meeting, the meeting before, does anybody really care? You know, I mean, is this, is this thing gotten to a point where nobody really cares about it, whether it is or not? I think we're going to find out this year. So, I would just hope that the citizens, without having to do a survey, are going to let us know.
So, Dean, is that no survey?
No survey.
Okay. All right. So, we're clear on the motion. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right. So, the motion passes, and we move on to Agenda Item 11B, which is, let's see. Approval of the revised master joint use agreement and the new individual joint use agreement for Oak and McAuliffe Middle Schools with the city, I'm sorry, with Los Almeos Unified School District. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. Again, the Recreation and Parks Director, Corey Licken, will give the staff report. Just briefly, this is a follow-up. City Council has held two different workshops on the individual joint use agreements and the master joint use agreement, and it has been discussed at quite a few meetings now with the joint working group of the school district and the city, and staff, city staff and the school district staff have been working together to get to this point where the individual joint use agreements that are included are on your agenda, are on there for consideration of approval tonight. There's going to be a follow-up. Working group meets tomorrow, and the school board has the item on their agenda tomorrow night as well. So, Corey?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, like the City Manager says, we brought three of these joint use agreements before the City Council in a, in a couple of study sessions. The master joint use agreement and the individual joint use agreement for McAuliffe Middle School Field and for Oak Middle School Field. The, in addition to those this evening, we've brought forward the individual joint use agreement for the Oak Middle School Bike and Walk Path, the Oak Middle School Community Restroom, and the Oak Middle School Basketball Courts. That is the outdoor basketball courts. Just to briefly reiterate, the master joint use agreement houses the legal language, and that agreement was signed in 2010, is set to expire in 2015, which is why it's being brought back today. And all of these use agreements, the individual joint use agreements, the length and term of those is housed in the master joint use agreement. So, what's being recommended is a, is a five-year agreement with a five-year extension. Over the last several months, the staff has met and met with the, the working group, the city district working group, to revise and draft all of the, the joint use agreements thus far. They are all attached here within, the only outstanding IJUA is for the Oak Gymnasium, which has not yet been fully vetted at the, at the working group nor with staff. Do you want me to reiterate the, the Oak and McAuliffe Field ones, or just move into the new ones?
I think we move into the new ones. We've already seen the others, but it's up to the council.
Yeah. The, just, just so you know, the, nothing has really changed in, in those...
This isn't a Trojan horse or anything, right? Okay. Just want to make sure.
The, the new individual joint use agreement for the Oak Bike and Walking Path that leads to Coyote Creek is being recommended that the city currently, or continue to maintain as we currently do. It's about a 10 to 12-foot path that goes from Oak, Oak Street all the way back to Coyote Creek Park. It is, the land is owned by the, the school district. It is Oak Middle School land adjacent to the Royal Oak Mobile Home Park. Currently, Public Works maintains that, that area, and we're recommending that, that that continue, that the city maintain 100% of that area. The fence was just replaced by the district and will remain district property. So, if there is issues with the fencing, the district will, will make care of that short of vandalism, and then we'll go, hopefully go after the culprit to reimburse the, the district. The Oak Outdoor Basketball Courts are mainly used by the district, with occasional use by the city and the user group National Junior Basketball, with minimal wear and tear of, of basic, you know, running and playing on the blacktop. It's being recommended that the district cover all expenses associated with the courts, except for the lights that are on the same poles that are controlled on the fields. So, the city will maintain 100% of the lights as we do on the fields. The, apologize, the Oak Committee, Community Restrooms is being recommended that we continue the current practices of 50-50 split. Currently, the city, the school district maintains it and cleans it during school hours, and just at the end of the school day before the community uses it. And then, in the evening time and on weekends, when the, when the community uses it, the city maintains and cleans up after it. We would split, that, obviously being brand-new, we hope that everything lasts a long time. It's of industrial strength and condition. Everything is stainless steel. So, it is the hope that, that it won't need to be repaired, major repairs, for, for quite a while. But in the event that that does occur, we would split it 50-50 with the school district, based on 50-50 usage. And the, if, in case of vandalism or issues during the time of usage, if it happens during the school's time, then the school may, will, will fix those repairs. And if it happens in the evening time, either during city programs or during user group programs, then the city would do that, and we would try and go after whoever vandalized it, and I'm sure the district would do the same as well. As I said before, the Oak Gymnasium was, was recently upgraded. We have not gone into the details of that, so that's why it is not before you tonight. But as the city district working group has the opportunity, or if the city council wants to weigh in on those, we can provide that information. There is a city district group working meeting tomorrow that we will report on the action taken tonight. And like the City Manager said, the school district will be looking at this, these five joint use agreements tomorrow evening at their meeting. Again, the draft master, the master joint use agreement basically remains intact. We did add a few new sections, including this, that the district is allowing the city to continue using the land next to Oak School, which is currently the community center parking lot, and the patio for the youth center and that stretch of land. Additionally, a new section was added to describe the, the capital improvement funds, and how that will be collected and distributed. There may be some changes in that, as the district attorneys and the district has more of an opportunity to review the new legal laws of the Civic Center Act, and how fees can be collected and distributed and utilized, both for the, the capital usage as well as the, the day-to-day usage. The general fiscal impact for the five joint use agreements is estimated anywhere between $30,000 and $45,000 annually, depending on the water costs mainly, and some additional staff time for Public Works to maintain the extra acre of turf at the McAuliffe Field. Again, the water costs and fertigation at the McAuliffe Track are not currently budgeted in the 14, 15 fiscal year budget. We can bring that back at the, at the mid-year to make that adjustment. And there's, for the new IJUAs, there's no anticipated expenditures, as, as we're basically operating as we currently do. If, again, the potential impact for the Oak Gymnasium depends on combination of revenue losses or expenditures, anticipated expenditures or unanticipated expenditures, that could range anywhere between zero and $12,000, again, just depending upon the negotiations with the district. So, with that, I'll turn it over to, back to you, Mayor, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. We'll bring it back to the council. Anyone have any questions? Oh, Dean?
On the water. For some reason, I thought we were picking up 100% of the water. Has that changed? Because it says here on page three or six in the staff report, that the water from Oak and McAuliffe is a 50-50 split.
Correct. For both fields, it's 50-50. It will be a 50-50 split of water.
Okay.
Currently, the city does not pay any water at Oak.
Okay. The second question, I guess, is, we'd talked about reaching out to Long Beach on the reclaimed water, to be able to move those, and the feedback that I've gotten is, is that there's a pushback or an obstacle on the school district's side, because they fall under different regulations, or that it has to be through them. The gentleman from Golden State has already left, unfortunately. But I was also told that whatever we did, in terms of trying to bring Purple Pipe across, over to take care of those fields, that Golden State would enter into that as well. Do you have any update on where we are? Is anything being done, or we just made an inquiry and it's dropped?
No, I've spoken with the, the folks over at the LA County Sanitation District. He gave me a lot of, of things to follow up on. Basically, what he said is, is yes, it's possible. However, there are a lot of obstacles and a lot of players that we would need to meet with and discuss. Right now, the LA County Sanitation District has a contract with the city of Long Beach to provide Long Beach with as much reclaimed recycled water as they need. He said, right now, there is excess water, but that is going to the Aquifer?
Yeah, for the replenish, water replenishment.
Correct. They're currently in the midst of expanding their, I can't remember what he said, about 80%, and they're going to 100% of recycled water. So, there is the possibility of, of additional water, but likely we would need to take the water from the city of Long Beach. So, we would need to meet with them, because that's where it would be coming from. Basically, then what he said is, we, the, the city would then be responsible for getting the water over to water over to here. So we would need to speak with flood control, with Caltrans, whoever it would impact coming from Long Beach over across here. To my understanding, the district has basically said that, yeah, they can use reclaimed water on their fields, that they understand that that's the case. They would need to do some additional investigation to make sure that, you know, I'm sure they would need to bless the water, no pun intended, to make sure that it's appropriate for usage. You know, I'm under the assumption if they can use it at the city of Long Beach Fields, school district, likely that the state regulations are, not sure about any local. But basically, what I was told is likely because of utility regulation, the city would need to sell the water back to Golden State Water and then purchase it again from Golden State Water because we can't act as a utility and purchase the water. So that was another avenue that we need to meet with Golden State Water and see the feasibility. And what sanitation district basically said is, you know, good luck getting anybody else to pay for it, that Golden State Water. And we did contact Golden State Water and they do not currently have any recycled water in our area. So, yes, we've made the contact, left messages with the city of Long Beach and haven't yet had the discussion with them. But we can continue that path if that's what we want to do.
My concern is, is that in approving this tonight, I have several reservations. One of them deals with the water. I don't want to just simply approve this and then we find that those obstacles become so much that we don't have staff, we don't have time, whatever the case may be. I think if an obstacle's there, there's an option. And if we want the water, we can get the water. And if it's going to be substantial from the standpoint of savings, it behooves the school district to get on board in the same process.
Dean, if you could, the city attorney wanted to add something. I don't know if it's applicable to what you're saying right now.
I don't have to interrupt.
Oh, I apologize.
So my concern is, is that in approving it, I don't want the water issue to simply just fall off the table in the process. I want to make sure that we continue to look at that going down. Second thing is, when we approved the fee schedule, it went to the school district and the school district changed dramatically the reclaiming of the fees and changed the, if I'm not mistaken, we approved it first, it went to them, and they changed it to every four-year, or she switched it from, originally it was going to be five and five, so that it was 10 and two-year period. And then that's what the agreement was with the ad hoc that I was on at that time. And then by the time the board approved it, I guess the board approved it before we did.
Correct.
If, yeah, okay. So the board approved it then before we did, but then they switched it. And instead of it being five and five and it was done in two years, it was 250 for five years in order to get up to the original plan. If we approve this tonight, I wanted to prove, if my colleagues go along with it, I wanted to prove contingent on the fact that no changes are made by the school board. And if the school board makes changes, then it's got to come back to us for ratification.
That would be my understanding of any contract. If anything changes, then it would need to come back with those changes. So what the district is bringing forward is the same agreements that you have in front of you. That's what they already have in front of them. So short of any changes tonight or tomorrow night, if there are changes tonight, then likely, they would need to approve those changes at a later meeting once they can agendize the changes and vice versa. If they approve it with changes tomorrow night, then we would need to, the city council would need to make the, approve the changes that the district makes.
Well, I've read through all of this twice and don't understand a whole lot of it, so I'm relying heavily on staff's negotiations. And I know that that's been ongoing between the district and the city and that you guys have smoothed off any rough edges as best you can. So I'm in favor moving forward. Contingent on us coming back. You have something?
I just wanted to add one little thing and that is, or clarify, with regard to the McAuliffe water issue, it's 50-50, but only after the district installs sub-meters for the water. So that's it.
Perfect.
I just, I'll just also add that your discussion, Councilmember Gross, was held with the Recreation Parks Cultural Arts Commission last Wednesday night, too. They brought the question up to staff and so that, it was a healthy discussion that took place. We responded back that the council has directed staff to look at that, so it will remain on our radar screen.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kuzumato?
So if I may add, to Councilmember Gross's concern about the purple pipes and the recycled water, so both, I think Stephen Mendoza and John Eclavia from the school had done some extensive research. I think John had done a lot, so there is, there is look at that. And then I think there was some analysis going on. And I think there was something about, they are not needing to go to Golden State Water on this. There's something, a new regulation, I think, on the, in the state that allows, I guess, us to use it about having to go through Golden State. So that was one part. Now, I'm changing gears a little bit. So Cory, on the bike path, so I'm a little, I guess, you know, the bike path, I should have called you. I looked at it just the other night and was kind of puzzling over the inspection criteria. Now, so McAuliffe Field, Oak Field, Basketball Courts, outdoor ba, I can understand the inspection criteria to say what's safe, what's unsafe. How do you, how do you say what's unsafe about the bike path? Is it just kind of obvious?
I mean, like anything else, you know, people walking and, you know, sinkholes opening up or, you know, trip hazards, dead animals, that sort of thing, just general maintenance. It's, it's a walking path, it's a biking path, so just general safety of those utilizing it.
It seems, yeah, it's, I guess inspection reveals any dangerous conditions. It was somewhat nebulous in my mind, so I was just wondering if there's a way to tighten up the language without really, you know, throwing a wrench in the work, because that's not my intent. But I would want something more quantifiable. Again, as a difference to that, you know, as opposed to a gopher hole-ridden field, I can understand that. But this one, to me, is somewhat more, it could be very nebulous, right? There's, you know, vegetation on the trail, it's unsafe.
Yeah, and, I mean, those are the types of things that if there's vegetation on the trail, then we would need to, you know, talk to Public Works and figure out what we would need to eliminate that's in the pathways or...
But recognize that it, that would be our assessment, or let's say that there's a condition that you would deem not unsafe, but the school might, and, you know, from a caution standpoint. So that's where I'm trying to, trying to get that to where, now, would something like the Joint Powers Insurance Agency, would that kind of guidelines apply to something like this and could that be, you know, cited as a reference? And so I'm just looking at a way to tighten it up because...
I mean, I think we kind of left it a little ambiguous just because of, well, we tried to use the same language on a lot of them.
I know, I saw that. And I don't know that it applies just to this.
And streamline that. I mean, we just really don't know exactly what we may be facing and what the issues may be if, you know, I think, I don't know whether CJPIA has regulations on a, or policies on a biking path or a walking path or a meandering path.
Well, but sidewalks certainly, right? I think there'd be some, I mean, so there'd be some criteria. And then I would, I would think that, that, again, in a future, you know, I guess, organization with the board, the school board may be different people, we might be different people, and this could be used as some of the senses so nebulous, saying, hey, we're going to shut you down because there's too much vegetation, there's, you know, too many cracks and the, things like that. So what's safe, what's unsafe? That's what I'm, I'm trying to poke at, saying, don't, you know, I say a little more, you know, definition on this might be prudent versus leaving it more general. And then I'm going to yield back to Councilmember Gross, he has something to add.
I'm just going to say, this is a path that's been in existence for a long time that's primarily asphalt. And it has dirt practically on both sides. There is fencing, once it passes the parking lot, that goes along there. And there's been times where that fencing is impacted because of activities on the, on the playing field, excuse me, on the playing fields. But I think it, it is not intended to be an approved access from the standpoint that it's got curbs and gutters and, and things of that nature is designed for walking and biking. It's more natural with a sprinkling of asphalt on it. But I mean, there have been issues where there's been rises in it and I think city staff goes out and takes care of those once they're brought to their attention. So routine...
I understand, but I would just, the counterpoint to that is, very, very rigorously and strictly, I can say loose gravel is unsafe, therefore, you can't use it, shut it down. Right? That's, you know, so that's, that's the part where I think that, you know, well, I'm not going to belabor it, so. So I just wanted to, you know, caution that. With that, I'll pass back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Edgar?
A lot of detail in here. I think in general, I'm fine with this. I guess from the Parks and Recreation Commission and the ad hoc committee, just at a summary level, it sounds like you guys were fine. So I'm supportive. I think the only thing I would ask Patty, if she's here and awake in the back, hey, Patty. The part about the reclaimed water, I feel very strongly about, too, is it being an option and no health issues with the school district. I'm on the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy Board and we do projects from the San Gabriel Mountains to the river. And with Prop 1 that just passed for the water bond, they actually have a recycling amount of about $30 to $40 million that'll get awarded to Rivers and Mountains Conservancy. So we're starting to form projects on that corridor. I have an appointment to present and update the Orange County Council of Governments. I'm their rep on this committee and I'm going to start a call for projects. And so I'm going to champion, for as long as I'll be able to stay on that board, a project for bringing the reclaimed water over from Long Beach as a project for Orange County. And I just need to know I'm not doing it for waste of time because at the end, you guys maybe wouldn't be able to use water. So I would just ask, can you clarify for sure on the reclaimed water thing? Because it's a big solution for us. That field is like the most optimal thing right there on the other side of that riverbed. And, okay, so no issue there. If we can get it over, it can be used. Okay, and with that, I'm ready to go.
And is that a volunteer for four more years on that Rivers and Mountains Conservancy? Would just, no?
Yeah, no, I want to get on the library board.
If you, if you start it.
Yeah, yeah. I deserve it.
Mayor Proton?
I'd like to thank the staff and the entire working group for all the work they've done on this. It's really voluminous and I know you guys put in a lot of time. Cory, my only question is, previously, I'd questioned the 50-50, you know, asking you to, in your best judgment, you know, did you take a look at that? Does 50-50 seem fair to you?
Yeah, allocation of the fields is right around 50-50. Actual usage changes often. You know, we went back and really, again, the actual usage, you know, the city has, the school district has used it from seven in the morning till four, 4:30 in the afternoon. They may not use it every period, they may not use it all day during those times, during, depending on their curriculum, they may or may not be on the fields or on the courts, they may be inside the gym, vice versa. Obviously, if it rains, then they're indoors doing those activities. The city usage of it, actual city usage for city programs is basically on demand. We cancel adult programs or youth programs based on what the clientele's want, whether we can get enough people. And if we get more sign-ups, then we utilize more field space. And same with the user groups, based on their numbers and their contingent. So that number does fluctuate often. Obviously, our goal as staff is to fill the city's time as much as possible with the caveat of having Tony in my ear saying, we need to rest the field, we need to rest the field, we need to rest the field. So, but yes, we went back and looked at it. We tried to do an analysis of when it gets used and again, it's all over the map. But allocation-wise, school district has it 50% of the time, city has it about 50% of the time as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So Warren and I have been on the sad ad committee and staff on both sides of the playing field have been really involved. I know that they were aiming to get this done a lot sooner, but I feel encouraged that we're almost to the end. I will say that I think that we have been clear on the Oak Gym, that we felt that that was in perpetuity. We've talked to the city attorney and he said if there were any changes to that, then it would open us up to losing that prior standing. So right now, we, the district maintains it and, and they take care of 100% of the utilities. That's, that's a good deal because we just gave them $300,000 towards the upkeep. I don't know that moving forward, we should change this item because we would lose that in perpetuity. But in addition to that, as we did with the $300,000, the council, should they choose to for upgrades, always give money by a separate action. They don't need to include it in this contract. I think that would be unwise of us. City concern I think that we have is for where the groups are going to be placed, Cory, and we discussed this at the commission meeting, which is we're going to potentially keep, is it Friday Night Lights over at the McAuliffe Field?
Currently, yeah.
Okay, yes. We talked about, you know, switching it to their, two years there and then switching it two years to another field to give the, you know, fields chance to, the new field chance to grow in, but then switch them back. I just think that we need to be very careful that we don't end up unintentionally with the lion's share for our fields where our maintenance has to be to a greater level or a greater amount of people in order to maintain that field. And I expressed that, I don't think that's any shock to Patty. I brought that up at the last meeting. I just want to make sure that we have a balance as far as the PRZ level of usage. I know that the soccer and the football are about the same. So as long as we balance that out, I think we're looking after staff's best interest and the communities for the amount of money that would cost us to upkeep, being that we're already increasing beyond what we have already in costs. Cory, in the weekly, under Oak Field Lights, there was some concern about the lights were not working. Is there an update on that?
Currently, I believe there's two poles that are still not working. The electrician's been out there a couple of days last week. We're trying to find the schematic plans to follow the wiring and see where the wiring may be an issue, if it's easily accessible or not easily accessible. We've been in communication with the district to let them know about the issues and we're just kind of, once we can get the, the plans over to the electrician, then he can work that out and we can figure out what the issues are. We've replaced a few things in the boxes to try and make that better. And now that's, that's the next thing. And then once that is finished, then we need to possibly change out some ballasts which are on top of the poles because the poles are very old and we need to change out some of the lights. But right now, I believe all except for two of the light standards are working. So you'll see, it's sufficient for certain areas of the field to be played on and it is being utilized.
That's great news. You talked in the weekly about the cost for that, it being kind of high because bucket trucks that would reach that high are few and far between, so it's a little more costly. Do we have an idea of what these repairs are going to cost us, just a rough estimate?
We don't yet because we don't quite know where the issue is. If the issue is underground in a vault that we can lift something up and find it, replace it, and it fixes everything, then, you know, it'll be relatively inexpensive. If, you know, it involves digging up dirt and sections of the track or wherever the wiring may be, it obviously will be much more significant. Depending on if, you know, it's just a ballast that needs to be replaced, that's probably $1,000 or $2,000. And depending on how many of them need to be replaced, the ongoing maintenance of changing out light bulbs, that's pretty standard. But this is a little unusual for these lights. But they, they are old and the poles are old and, so we're just kind of keeping our fingers crossed so we can easily figure out what the issue is and make the necessary repairs. Obviously, depending on the... Obviously, depending on the significant levels of it, we'll, we'll definitely keep you informed.
Okay. My, my question is, is when we get the total amount that we owe for this repair, for lack of better words, that's going to be in addition to the increases, or is that factored in somewhere? Because I know we get 100% of the money for the lights, but I would imagine that kind of goes into a general fund for the overall maintenance of the fields. Is that...
No. The, the lights is, is our, we have the electric bill for the lights. We maintain the lights. The city repairs the lights and keeps 100% of the proceeds for the lights.
No, I understand that, but let me, let me say this in a different way. This cost is going to have to be charged to the city when it's done, correct? Okay. So, since we don't have an idea, the amounts that, if these are ratified, there's an additional cost for water that we know that could range from one point to the other. There's additional costs that we're going to be paying on top of what we already pay. Is that correct?
For these repairs. I mean, we make the repairs on the lights currently. We change out the light bulbs, and those costs range from a few hundred to a couple thousand dollars annually.
Right.
This is going to be a little bit more unusual. Obviously, we'll look at our budget specifically and, and see where we can fit it in and, and adjust accordingly. And if it's of extreme significance, then, you know, I'll work with the city manager and with the finance director and see what we can't come up with. And obviously, if it's over the city manager's threshold of expenditure, then it, it will come back. But either way, we'll keep you informed on what we find and how bad the problem is and that sort of thing. We're already trying to, you know, communicate that to all the users of the field and, and keeping them up to date, because, you know, we're going on a couple of weeks now of not full usage of the field.
Right. Do we have any concerns, being that these poles are older, and now we're seeing additional costs, which we haven't seen in the past? Is it wise for us to take on 100% of lights? I know that we do right now, and we get the revenue for it. But if these lights are going to need to be replaced, let's just say in the next five years, because there's dramatic problems with them, that's going to fall solely on the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, what kind of, just rough estimate, what kind of money are we talking if we had to replace this?
Tens of thousands.
Okay. So, do you have any concerns, and I'll leave it with this, do you have any concerns that if that kind of necessity came up, that we, being the sole person who receives the money and maintains those, it might be a huge negative impact for us? Have we looked at splitting that with the school district? I don't think we ever talked about that in the meetings, because it's the way it was. But do you have any concerns about that?
Well, obviously, I mean, but, but we, the city, installed the poles. And so, my understanding is, is the district doesn't want to have anything to do with it. They don't utilize them at all, because it, schools only during daytime, so they have no use for the lights. Obviously, they'll use them if they need access to it in the evening time, because it's there. But I don't think that the district would, would have installed them just for back-to-school night, or just for, you know, the one or two activities or events. Even out at the McCullough Field, the track, lacrosse plays out there, and they rent light poles, because there are no lights out there. So, obviously, we can ask the district, but I, I would highly doubt they would be, have any interest in investing in the...
I understand. I just want it to be noted for the council that that is a potential thing in the future that could happen, and it could be a significant amount. Okay. With that, I have no other input, other than that I, I would recommend that we leave the current agreement for Oak Gym as it is, and should we decide we want to give more money, we have that opportunity. Richard?
Let me ask a question along those lines for clarification. The summary indicates master use agreement, individual joint use agreements between the two entities, but the recommendation specifically leaves out the Oak Gym, if I'm reading this correct. And then, Attachment 7 includes the Oak Gym. And we, you and I, Mayor, had discussed the fact that we thought the imperperity was important. I want to make sure I'm not missing something. I mean, I spent a lot of time over the weekend studying my Greek mythology, so I wanted to make sure that I got this right.
The, the master joint use agreement does reference the, the IJUA for the Oak Gymnasium, for the Oak Gymnasium, but the, there is no updated IJUA for Oak. So, if there is an update to Oak, then it would fall under here. Now, whether the five-year and five-year supersedes the in-perpetuity, I'd probably defer that to the city attorney.
That'd be a good idea.
In the event of conflict, the master agreement applies, so...
That's your answer, then?
Pardon?
So, all right. Dean, did you raise your hand?
I wasn't done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. The, so, in English, where are we then on the Oak Gym? Are we giving away the in-perpetuity or not?
No.
Well, nothing's been approved yet.
Okay. If we approve it, have we given it away?
No. It's not on, it's not on here to...
The master agreement doesn't even, doesn't mention Oak Gym except for the chart.
That's why I'm asking, because it's not mentioned, yes.
So, nothing should change with regard to Oak Gym, because it's not mentioned in the revised master agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Dean?
Yeah. I'll go ahead and move the action as recommended, with the stipulation that if it, if the school board changes anything, it comes back to us, and with the caveat that we continue to look at the purple pipe and try to find reclaimed water.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. And, and just so that, you know, for purpose of information, I did bring those concerns up at the meeting and made them aware. They had some concerns with regards to us. We had some concerns with them. And I think those have all been vetted out, and when you all move forward with the next group that goes over there, I think it'll be a, a good working environment. Okay, so we have a recommendation?
Consultation.
Searcher 5.2.3, IJUA number three for Oak Gym. So, it is referenced in the master agreement.
That, that's what I thought, is that there was some discussion to change giving them half of the revenues from...
What, what page is that on?
Yeah, it's page four. Four of 19 on the master agreement.
So, at this point, we should, well, there's, there's no changed agreement, so that would be the agreement that's currently in effect, correct?
I believe so, but let me just double-check before I answer that.
And Dean, that's my purpose for bringing it up, is that I think that if we're talking about moving this, we should do it as a whole, not piecemealing it with just leaving that out. I don't know where the rest of the council stands on it, but...
Can we take a recess while they're conferring?
Sure. Go ahead and take a recess. All right, we're going to reconvene the meeting, and we'll defer to the city attorney.
Okay. The master use agreement provides that the term of the master use agreement is five plus five. The parties may extend the term, I mean, the, each individual use agreement shall contain a separate provision setting forth the term for that IJUA. The Oak Agreement is in perpetuity. And so, at this point, the Oak Agreement is in effect and will remain in effect unless and until either a new one is negotiated or a court determines otherwise.
Okay.
So, do we, do we take out 5.2.3 at that point then, or we leave it in?
I don't think that matters. In fact, if they, this agreement shall govern the following properties identified. Use Agreement number three for Oak Gym doesn't matter because of the provision I just read, which is the page before, and that says that, or, yeah, that says that the, the term of the Oak Use Agreement continues to apply.
The term in the other new agreements references the, the term set forth in the master, which would be the five-year and the five-year. So, since it doesn't have another specific date, it falls to the five-year and the five-year. The Oak Gym has the clause, the in-perpetuity clause. So, my understanding is then, since it has terms in the IJUA, it wouldn't be impacted by the five-year and five-year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, now you've lost me. Because the motion was to approve the document subject to the, any change by the school district and continue the stress on the purple pipe. Do we need to strike 5.2.3? In other words, does it have to come out, or, or have we...
It incorporates IJUA for Oak Gym, which is in perpetuity.
Okay.
So, actually, it's...
So, it's not, it's not the five plus five that's identified in 2.0?
Right. Because of 2.0, which says each IJUA shall contain a separate provision setting forth the term for that IJUA.
Okay. So, we're good on the motion, and we can vote on it.
Well, one thing, Patty, since you're the representative of the school district, are you in agreement with what was just said?
We have the exact same agreement to you, and I agree with you. If you make resolutions that somehow change those agreements, the board would have to take action on whatever it is you agreed to.
Okay.
And just to be clear, all the agreements in the past that were approved, or what this group, the working group, had agreed to, we did not change it prior to our action for you.
Right. And, and I've been very specific about this when we've talked at the meetings about, I didn't, I didn't support that, and I wouldn't support it at the council level. So, are we looking to act on this as a whole and include the Oak Field with the language that's in there now, so it's all done and we can move forward? Because really, this was supposed to be done, we were hoping to have it done. Wasn't it June, Corey, that we'd hoped to finish all of this? And then, it's just taken longer because of all the extra stuff?
I think at one time, it was, the target was the end of the fiscal year, and then, it moved. The last couple of times we've talked with the working group, it's been the target at the end of the calendar year.
Right.
We're now actually ahead of that target.
Right. So, what do you recommend, then, Brett?
I think you've made the mo, you've made the motion in the second...
Motion's in the second, so...
And then, we would take, depending on the vote of the council, we'll take it to the working group tomorrow, let them know it's on their agenda. It's on our agenda, the working group's agenda tomorrow. We can discuss it with them, let them know the council approved what was in our staff report. That's the same thing that's on the school board, school district's board agenda tomorrow night as well. So, then, we will wait and get the feedback from them to see if the board approves what's on their agenda.
Sure. But this, this agenda item says it excludes the Oak Gym. So, I'm asking, Dean, are you looking to include the Oak Gym as it stands, no change, or are we still leaving that out?
My motion was on the recommended action, which is there. If it's included as part of that, then yes. If it's not, then no. But it is part of the agreements that we're agreeing to.
You guys, I feel like we're kind of tired, and we're going in a circle here. I, I, I mean, and I haven't weighed in on this at all, but it, it seems pretty straightforward. The Oak Gym is something that's in perpetuity, and unless we're actively cleaving it out, it stays the same.
Right.
So, I, I think this is fine, and I think the working group and the city, or the working group and the board tomorrow, I think we all have the same marching orders. Anybody pulls their gun, it's, it's on. If not, it just goes all the way through.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second, correct, Warren? You seconded. All right. So, all in favor for the recommended action by staff? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None?
No, I haven't voted yet.
Oh, sorry, Richard.
Yeah, I'll vote yes.
Do you want it?
Yes, I do.
Okay. All right, so...
I would like to see this specific issue addressed. If, unless you tell me, I'm, we just don't need it. But perpetuity's a long time, and a lot of different people are going to review this and bend it how they want over the years. And I'd like to be able to say that we cemented that that is there. There's no doubt that this is, this is separated out.
Well, one thing, I think this discussion in the minutes will cement that it's there, and it's clear that it's there to both sides.
Okay.
And at some point in the future, I imagine it probably will be renegotiated.
Is it clear that they're agreeing to it from the school board?
Well, I don't know that...
We'll find out tomorrow.
Yeah. I mean, it's the whole school board that needs to approve.
If you guys are comfortable, I can live with it.
I have the same concerns as you, but if Carrie's good with it. So, we have a 5-0 vote to support. Right now, it's about 10 till 10. We still have a couple more items and closed session. So, we have to poll the council to make sure that they want to extend past the meeting deadline. Troy?
Wasn't it 9:45?
It's now, yeah, we're past 9:45.
But then, we have to take a vote before, just procedurally?
Yeah, I think that's the question.
We've done it a little bit late before. I didn't want to interrupt Dean or myself. It's up to you guys. If you don't want to extend, that's fine.
Well, I just want to follow the ordinance or the law. If it's okay, I mean, city attorney, where are we at?
The policy is that you have to vote by 9:45. It's past 9:45.
Okay. So, then, what is the procedure? Do we just continue these other two items to the next meeting?
Yeah. I mean, unless you want to try and get through one or both of them, you still have 10 minutes.
Okay. And that's not applicable to the closed session after, is that correct?
I'm afraid that it's correct.
Okay. All right. So, why don't we go ahead and start on number 11C, which is...
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. The Public Works Superintendent, Tony Brandyberry, is going to do the staff report on this item regarding the Parks and Landscape Maintenance Contract.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. During the 2014-15 budget discussions, staff was asked to expand the available cost-effective options for landscape maintenance to our fields, parks, and median islands. More importantly, the extra required maintenance to Coyote Creek Park and the sports field agreement, maintenance to coincide with the PRZ report. Coyote Creek Park will take an estimated additional 40 hours of maintenance per week. The sports field maintenance will also take an estimated 40 hours per week. Staff originally recommended four additional part-time employees at 20 hours per week to aid in this maintenance. To date, one part-time employee has been hired at 26 hours per week until the Coyote Creek Park maintenance is taken over by Public Works from the contractor. In September of this year, Public Works advised, advertised a request for proposal, RFP, for landscape maintenance services. This proposal included litter removal, edging, mowing, and sweeping or blowing of all the landscaped turf facilities within the city, excluding McCullough Field due to district policy. Director of Community Development, Public Works, Stephen Mendoza, and myself independently graded the proposals in the same manner as other proposals have been recently graded. Both of us had the same recommendation of Midori Gardens to fulfill the contract expectation. You will find two tables in the staff report, providing the grading results, along with the cost results. Staff recommends that to complete the landscape maintenance expectations of the city council and residents, and remain cost-efficient and effective. A hybrid approach to contracting is an attractive solution. The hybrid concept works by contracting the routine type maintenance to a contractor, mowing, edging, blowing, et cetera, therefore leaving the more technical type of maintenance to the city crews. This technical maintenance would include all irrigation repairs, weed abatement, chemical applications, aeration, trimming, and replanting. This hybrid approach only will work if retaining the full-time staffing levels that were approved in the 2014-15 budget. Staff believes that many benefits will arise from a hybrid contract approach. These include, as listed in the staff report, more experienced city staff performing the landscape maintenance to both Coyote Creek Park and the sports fields compared to part-time workers, less training time with the increased expectations of maintenance to the use of full-time, in-house, experienced staff, no addition... full-time, in-house, experienced staff, no additional cost associated with the sports field user groups, the city's risk exposure will be minimized by a contractor performing the turf landscape maintenance along with three fewer part-time employees, cost savings on equipment and repair and replacement that is non-sports field related. The current trained part-time employee will aid with the McCullough Field maintenance, as all maintenance to this site will still be performed by city staff. As level of landscape maintenance is raised, the city may see some added staff time availability due to efficiencies gained in trimming and weed abatement. This added time would be used for streets, concrete, or building maintenance. At this time, staff is unavailable to estimate the actual amount due to the drought conditions, Mother Nature, et cetera, will inform council if and when it occurs. Total cost of hiring four time, four part-time maintenance workers as approved in the 2014-15 budget is $86,880. Total cost of the contract is $61,332, with retaining one part-time maintenance worker for three years, while Coyote Creek Park gets established and to aid with the sports fields, is $21,270, together totaling $83,052. The city would see a cost savings of $3,828 if the hybrid contracting is approved. This concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions or discussions you may have.
All right, we'll bring it back to council, we have five minutes. Do we want to get into discussion, or do we want to continue it?
Let's try.
All right, you're up, Rich.
One question, so there's, just to confirm, there's no layoffs?
No layoffs whatsoever.
Okay, it's just, the additional people are because of the added work of the agreements?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Are they going to be, are they going to be mowing the center medians that our crews do now?
Correct, any turf that's within the city limits, except for McCullough Field, will be mowed by the contractor. Mow, edge, blow, and also pick up the litter so they don't drive over it and load the litter.
Little cottonwood, Laurel Park, all of that.
Yeah, all turf areas, including city hall complex.
I have no questions.
Okay, Troy?
I have no questions.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, none? Motion carries. All right, moving on to discussion about city travel expense and travel policy. We've only got five minutes, why don't we just table it till the next one?
Agreed.
All right.
So, we're to move to.
Do we want to do council comments now? Do you guys want to do real quick council comments, because, all right, so who'd like to start?
Be happy to start. Give me one minute.
I'll go ahead and start while you're waiting, if that's okay. Thank you. So, the Orange County Fire Authority had selected the next fire chief, and we're in negotiations for salary and hope to confirm him by the December meeting, and it is Chief, the interim chief, Jeff Bowen, and it was really an interesting experience, I was on the ad hoc committee that did the recommendation, and hands down, he was, he is a very excellent candidate, and it was rather unusual that he went from interim to full-time, but he'll be there for a minimum of two years and no more than three, and he'll establish a succession plan for his replacement, which was something I really liked when he'd said that. The other thing is, I did have a chance to attend the honoring our fallen Golden Boot Award, and I want to thank the mayor and the council for allowing me, and Mayor Protem Murphy for allowing me the privilege of presenting the commendation to Laura Herzak for all the work that she does in the community, and it was a very, very nice gala dinner, black tie, over at the Long Beach Petroleum Club, and I, probably there was about 10, 12, maybe 12, 14 tables, I didn't really count, but there's a lot of folks there, and it was a well-attended event, so without, pass it back to you.
All right, next, Dean?
Go ahead. The activities that I've been on since our last meeting are shown on the website, losal.net. I would like to report out that I attended a three-day risk management program through California JPIA with a great deal of information, a lot of talk there about succession planning, and I will get that information transferred over to Chelsea Wilson, who I guess is the risk management HR person that handles that, but it was a very good informative program. Their next program next year, where they do this same type of thing, is going to be in San Francisco. We were fortunate to, the attendance at the event was taken care of by the CJPIA, we were fortunate to be able to get a scholarship, I guess is what it was referred to, to cover the lodging, so there was no cost on that to the city staff, and other than mileage and some parking, that was the only cost. I did win, they had a drawing at the end of it, and I did win one night for next year, so.
Right.
Whoever decides, or whoever goes next year, at least one night of it is paid. This past weekend, I attended a fairly prestigious dinner function with the leadership of the 79th Sustainment Support Command over at Joint Forces Training Base, where many of the leaders of that total organization from throughout the United States were there, a great speaker from their, their main command out of Washington DC was there. They had been involved, I think, with three or four days of leadership training over there at the base, and it was a very nice event, and they were very appreciative of the continued relationships with the community and with the city and the city council as well. I'd like to thank city staff and my colleagues, there was a card presented to me tonight, to myself and my wife, my wife's oldest son passed away yesterday morning up in the state of Washington on a hunting expedition, they, he was going, he moved up to Oregon for the sole purpose of being able to fish and hunt, and he was out on a hunt, apparently in the state of Washington, and during the evening, about 1:30 in the morning, yesterday morning, succumbed from a, they've now determined a massive heart attack. He was only 46 years old, so, just as a, as a warning. And so, I want to just thank the city staff for doing that, and extend the condolences to my wife and her family. We both have mixed families coming into the marriage, which is 17 years ago, as of last Saturday, but I, there was a comment about possibly adjourning in, in that name. He was not a resident here and not involved in the community, so I wouldn't ask that, but I appreciate the thoughts and prayers that staff has provided and the rest of the council, so thank you very much on that. With that, I'll pass it on.
Rich?
Yeah, we're past the time, but I'll, I'll pass, and I think we're supposed to end at 10, so.
All right, you lose? No, no comments, Troy, we can do it after.
Okay. Well, is there, I guess we're done, then?
Well, we tried at the 9:45, and we couldn't get the extension, so.
Okay.
All right, so the last three of us can do our oral comments after closed session.
Then, why can't we do them now? I mean, if we're going to do them then, if.
If you're going to violate the rules, you can as well violate it now.
Well, so then we just won't do any oral comments for the council from the three of us, then, since it's past the time? Just, can.
Adjourning to closed session.
Well, I have a couple items I want to report, if we're going to break the rule, then.
No, we said not, we're not.
Well, I thought you said we couldn't.
Well, I have an item that's going to come up on the agenda that I needed to make sure that I give you guys a heads up, so.
Just to clarify, the resolution says you can't start a new item after 10 o'clock, so technically you already started this item before 10 o'clock, so you can finish it if you choose.
Okay, great. All right. All right, Troy, you want to go?
Sure, a couple different things. Met with the Rivers and Mountains Conservancy, they actually came to our city, I wanted to thank staff, and we went through kind of an update, right now, we're pushing really hard to get additional funding for the bike path. You know, they did the park, and Tony's been working to get the maintenance up, and the contractor signs off on that, but what we're really trying to push for is this bike trail, it's about $300,000 getting paid for by the grant, because we had extra money left, and the problem is that we're in a little bit of a turf war with the LA County Flood Control, and the reason why I wanted to bring it up to you guys and not ask for your opinion is that what's going to end up happening is that we're going to probably do this path, and once we do it, as a matter of policy, we'll take kind of control over that path and have to do something in the future. We're going to, I've asked staff to agendize an item to talk about the sustainability of that bike path and whether that's a bad idea. I'm a little bit pressed, because that bike path has to be submitted to the Army Corps of Engineer also, and so we're in the middle of a permitting process, and if there's a problem policy-wise, I would just ask the city manager, do we think that this is something that we're going to have come back fairly soon, and, you know, for the US Army Corps of Engineers, there's a certain evaluation that has to be completed, because we're disrupting the, the path, so I just wondered if you could just give a really quick update, and then we'll talk about the details and the policy issue down the road in the agenda.
Okay, yeah, we're still trying to follow up with Army Corps of Engineers to determine, make sure that they weigh in positively on the future of the bike path and the maintenance of the bike path, and we also, our engineer, Dave Hunt, has requested an extension, he had sent that letter out to the chair, executive director of the Rivers Mountains Conservancy, asking for an extension through October 31st of next year. Anything else, Stephen, that related to that?
Okay, and then I would just encourage the citizens, you know, we had folks come in at the beginning of this council meeting and talked about the Cypress Project, the actual open community meeting is on Wednesday at 7:00 PM, I believe, and I would just encourage the residents to get out there and take a look at the project. Just a, you know, message of the community, too, is that, you know, the way they're going about this, I think, is procedurally right, is they're actually having the, before they file the permit with the city, they're actually having an open community, so if anybody in the community feels, as Debbie Feldman did, that maybe they were bait and switch or something like that, definitely educate yourself on that. I know Carrier Row and New Dutch, all that, they were noticed, people on my side of the city, we weren't, and the area that we're talking about specifically, because I don't think it was mentioned, was the old 33 acres right next to Cottonwood Church, so I would encourage everybody to get out there.
Just mention related to that, that they came and met with staff today as well, to just give an update as well, and talk about the community meeting that'll be taking place this Wednesday evening.
Okay, you know, and then the, I had the opportunity of going with a couple of city council members to Los Alamos Museum for the Honored Citizen Awards, and I just want to congratulate Dave Boyer and Denise Miller for accepting the awards for Honored Citizen, and to thank all the volunteers at the Los Alamos Museum that keep and preserve the culture and the history of our city, and also County Supervisor John Morlock came in attendance, and again, our mayor, Protem, had done most of the speaking there, did a great job, so thank you. The Wings Wheels and Rotor Expo, I think that was since we've had a meeting last, and so I just wanted to, you know, say to the Chamber of Commerce, great event that was put on there, really good time, and Lou Correa, or Senator Correa, when he was here tonight, the thing he didn't mention is he was also awarded one of the highest medals of honor in the state of California for his work on the Veterans Affairs Committee, and just as a little bit of putting him into the history of Los Alamos, is 2009, when we started the regional community mayor's group for this area, Senator Correa was on the Veterans Affairs Committee, and when we had the problem with the runway, trying to get money for the base, at the state level, we had Loretta Sanchez, who was on the Armed Services Committee federally, and we had Lou, or Senator Correa, helping us on the state, and we were able to get three to $4 million to get that, so they can utilize the runway, so I think very significant that he came here today and that, you know, he was, recognized our mayor, and I think that that was great, and I think for public service, he's been a really good supporter of the base. Just a couple plugs, the Americana selection or kickoff, the Americana kickoff is also Wednesday, if anybody's interested. I know Rich and I had participated when they had selected the Honored Citizen with Tom Barkley, when he was given that opportunity to be selected. The kickoff is a big deal for the city council folks, because they also are trying to get the auction kicked off and everything like that. If you have any questions in the community, reach out to the city manager or the city hall, and they'll give you details. One last thing, I know I'm not on the Orange County Sanitation District Board anymore, but I was, wanted to make a note of last night on 60 Minutes, that the actual groundwater replenishment system was profiled on there, and again, just a huge thing for Orange County, and an example of, again, just the reuse of sewer water, you know, I'm all about the wastewater, and now Rich is all about that, so, but I thought that was great, and Rich, you guys got to be really proud to be profiled like that and internationally known for, you know, being able to come up with new solutions. Lastly, one last plug for the Costa U Shelter is, they're having a charity ball, you know, for many years, we've always had this huge Costa Charity Event, usually in November, about this time period, and it didn't happen this year, so the first time ever, the group has kind of tried to take a different way of fundraising, they would usually raise about $250,000 at that event, so this year, they're having an event at Seagerstrom down in Orange County Performing Arts Center. If anybody's interested, you can contact city hall, or me through city hall, but we are putting on a huge dinner, and the show, Kinky Boots, is coming down from the Pantages, and it's, it's a dinner, and you get to go to the event, and again, I'm just trying to promote, get people out, get interest in the Costa U Shelter, and support another great cause in our city, and that's all I have, thank you. It's, the event is actually January 10th, and if anybody in the council's interested in going, I've got a table, and I would love to have you as my guest, and your husband or wife, or girlfriend, or whatever, so anyway, thank you.
If it can other.
That's what I call her, whatever.
All right, Rich, you're up.
I just want to thank Wendy for allowing Troy his minute.
There you go, thank you.
Our 10?
I will pass.
10 at 10 is what we call it.
Okay, I just want to reiterate what Troy said, the meeting for the 33 Acres at 7:00 at the Marriott, Brett, do we know if that's the Marriott right across the street from Carrier Row?
Yeah, right next door to the 33 acre site.
Okay, great, just so people are aware of where they need to go.
It's the courtyard, isn't it?
I think it's Courtyard, Marriott, yes. Congratulations to Dinah Hill and Jeff Barky for the school board reelection, and then also, there's an event at the museum, and I don't think we're going to have a meeting between now and then, Troy, you may know better, if you want to go ahead and add to it, it's the quilt and the.
Yeah, kind of a quilt and antique show, they, it's another fundraiser.
Well, I just thought, you know.
I just can't remember the exact time, I don't know, Wendy, if you have that. Marilyn will be really upset with me forgetting, so somebody help me here.
Well, I mean, it's a fundraiser, so we're looking for, you know, opportunities for them to, to get that, so if you have any questions, you want to attend that event, you can call the museum, or you can call the city and get that information, and other than that, we're going to go ahead and turn it over to the city manager. Do we need to restate the items that we're going back into closed session?
Just, oh, Winter Wonderland is on December 6th, that's our next event that is taking place, coming up, and then I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, because we won't have a meeting in between now and then, and Jason, you want to just say hi?
Hi.
Very good.
City council is going back into closed session to discuss the three matters that they didn't get to at the initial closed session, which are the city manager evaluation, government code 54957, conference with labor negotiator, and the conference with real property negotiators.
Okay, we're going to reset.